Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me: I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. City Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Present.
Councilmember Roberts?
Present.
Mayor Moon?
Present.
Mayor Protem is absent.
Yes, Mayor Protem Corse is a little bit under the weather tonight, so he won't be able to join us. Okay, the next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council at this time will discuss the order of the agenda and may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, and request consent calendar items be removed for discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items any council member would like removed from the consent calendar for a separate discussion and/or vote? And City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in your yellow folder you have a staff report prepared by City Clerk Mejia advising you that your staff would like you to add an open session item to your agenda this evening. I suppose it's designated as new business, that's what it is. You have a subcommittee that interviewed applicants for positions that are open on your administrative appeals board, and your city attorney's office, city clerk's office feel these are important positions to fill. There is a little bit of a backlog regarding appeals. We're urging you to find that it's an urgent matter of concern for the city, and certainly the city couldn't have known about these individuals being appointed prior to the time of this report because they hadn't yet been interviewed. So this came to the attention of staff after the posting of the agenda, and it is an urgent matter of concern. Per the one-page staff report, those are findings that you have to make by a four-fifths majority, and since, as you pointed out, Mayor, Protem Corse is not here, you're going to have to be unanimous on this to add it, making those two findings. That's pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2/B/2, and I'm available for questions on the procedure if you have any, but I don't think you will.
I think we all understand the urgency to get this done. Anyone have any objections?
No, do we need a formal vote?
Yes, please, you would need a formal vote.
I've made a motion.
Questions are made, and second, can't we just avoid those? Oh, we're gonna do a, okay.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mejia, would we put that as part of the consent calendar or have that on a separate item under new business?
It'll be a separate item under new business, the last item.
Okay, also, the city attorney would like for us to go very briefly for a five-minute additional closed session at the end of our open session on one quick item.
One single item that I really do need council advice or direction on.
There's no objections, we will adjourn to closed session this evening.
Yep.
Okay, and, okay, any items would like to have pulled? My screen's not up yet. Okay, Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One G as in Gray, one N as in Nancy.
One G and one N. Councilmember Holsteg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one P as in Paul.
Okay, Councilmember Roberts?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull one A and one L as in Larry.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended with the following items pulled from the consent calendar? One A, one G, one L, one N, and one P.
We don't have a screen, but I move. Approval?
I second that.
Objection on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Thank you, a report to the closed session, Mr. Kotkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Regarding the existing litigation items, we covered all but the Lockwood versus City of Palm Springs matter. Regarding the items of anticipated litigation, we covered a total of three out of the five matters that have been noticed. Regarding the initiation of litigation, we covered a total of two of the matters. We're going to be adjourning back into closed session for a third out of the four that were noticed. The council did have discussion regarding my evaluation, and the council did have discussion regarding the chalk real property item. There was inadequate time to address the Palm Springs Unified School District property. The council did confer with its labor negotiator, as noticed per the agenda. There was no reportable action taken on any matter considered this evening in closed session, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kotkin. We will now move to public testimony. The public testimony is for non, this portion of public testimony is for non-public hearing agenda items only. The time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council only on agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker, and you are asked to begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about, and to remind, testimony on non, for subjects not on tonight's agenda will be addressed later in the meeting. So, speakers, we have one up so far. Dick, says Bucket, I believe, is Burkett probably.
Burkett.
Yeah, says Bucket. Bouquet. Dick Bucket? Hey, they put Bucket, Bouquet in the system.
Why don't we refer to him as Dick?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. For the records, I think most of you know my name is Dick Burkett, and that I am vice-chair of the HSPB and a member of the demo ordinance subcommittee. So tonight, I just want to briefly express my thanks to the council, the staff, and the city management for allowing us the opportunity to present our recommendations and providing us the support of the legal council throughout the process as we discuss the demo ordinance revisions. This ordinance, of course, is all about preserving the future of Palm Springs and its international reputation, or our invaluable resources that include not only mid-century but many other styles of architecture such as Spanish Revival, Italian Renaissance, Adobian, English Cottage. These resources provide an opportunity for two modernism weeks, which has garnered international recognition and economic viability for our hospitality industry and businesses as well as a great sub-brand for PS. Without that immaturity, these events, of course, would not be possible. The council's input through the lengthy vetting process is greatly appreciated, it really was, as we have ended up with a more comprehensive ordinance revision that I think now serves both the citizens and the industries of Palm Springs quite well. Just thanks. Palm Springs, of only 50,000, has earned the reputation as the modernism capital of the world. I'm confident that your collective decision will ensure a bright future in this regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on this portion of public comments, Mr. Mejia?
No other speakers.
Okay, we will close this portion of the public comments. Next is City Council Committee and City Manager's comments.
Mr. Mayor, could we, we have a couple, we have a presentation this evening?
Yeah, I know, but that's part of the, oh, the presentations, okay, I was looking, I'm sorry, I skipped over it. Okay, presentations, and first off, before we start the presentations, on behalf of all of us, we'd like to send our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Greg Pettis and to all the residents of Cathedral City who have lost a very great administrator and leader in their city, and we've also lost a great leader for the entire Coachella Valley. So with our deepest condolences in that loss. And also, just two days ago, a close friend of many people in the city and a living legend, K. Ballard, passed away, and we'll have more to say on that later. But tonight, someone who is really a legend of Broadway and motion pictures and so many other things, Miss Carol Channing, also passed away. And Miss Channing was very much involved in the city of Palm Springs, and she was, did a lot of interactions, a lot of supports of events here in Palm Springs, and as a short tribute to the memory of Carol Channing, we'd like to play a short video tonight highlighting some of her involvement with the city of Palm Springs. Kay Ballard, passed away, and we'll have more to say on that later. But tonight, someone who is really a legend of Broadway and motion pictures and so many other things, Ms. Carol Channing, also passed away. And Ms. Channing was very much involved in the city of Palm Springs, and she was... Did a lot of interactions, a lot of supports of events here in Palm Springs, and as a short tribute to the memory of Carol Channing, we'd like to play a short video tonight highlighting Okay, they brought this slide up and didn't tell me about it, but the rebirth of an icon. I know the Coachella Vapory Theater is attempting to raise enough money to name that theater after her. I think they have about $3 million to go, but wishing them the best of luck on that. It would be a great... Be something really wonderful for her memory. Okay, the next item on the presentations is we have a presentation tonight on the Salton Sea by Brian Nostande, who is the Deputy County Executive Officer. So, Mr. Nostande, welcome. Up, the other microphone.
Over here, if that's all right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Mr. Ready, good to see you. I don't have a presentation, I'm just gonna give you a quick update from where we are right now. I'm gonna tell you where we are and then our next step. So, right now, as the county, we're negotiating with the state to implement what we call, what we envision, the North Lake of the Sea. And the state has some different versions and visions of the North Lake, so Supervisor Pres and I met with the Natural Resource Department, some members of the Department of Water Resources last week to try and work through why there are different versions and can we get on the same page, and hopefully, we'll be accomplishing that soon. It just... The state has... They come out with versions that are smaller than the lake that we want. They'll have like iterations that are one-third or one-quarter the size, where we want the whole lake in Riverside County to be usable, so no matter where you step down, walk into the lake from wherever you are in the shoreline, you'll be in a usable, healthy body of water. So that is our goal. So, once we get on the same page with the state, the next process will be paying for it. And so, right now, the state does have money, they have bond money that was just passed in June, and two previous bonds that had dedicated money to the sea, so there's over $450 million sitting there dedicated to the sea. So, that will be our next step, say, okay, how are we gonna pay for this? What portion will Riverside County get of those monies that are available? And then whatever is left, the delta to pay for that, more or less a berm dam that's gonna be built, the Board of Supervisors in Riverside County will have to decide, we will pay for the remainder of that or not. That will be the next step to be taken. And once those two are done, we should start processing permits and hopefully, start moving dirt and restoring the sea. So, that's where we are right now. Any questions, or if not, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Nostande? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Our next item is the Plaza Theater Community Forum. Oh, there's... That's the slide that came up. Okay, I missed it, read that a while ago. Let me get new glasses. On Saturday, Councilmember Roberts and I will be at the Plaza Theater at 10:30, and JR, you wanna give some details on that?
Sure, it's pretty easy. Where the mayor and I are most excited to give, excuse me, an update about where we are with the Plaza Theater. So, the theater's been shuttered for the last five years, it's been in need of restoration probably for about the last 20 years, and we will be unveiling the analysis that we just completed, a very in-depth analysis, on how we can go about restoring the theater. And we're inviting the community in to help us with ideas on how to raise the money to save the plaza and to get it back open as a theater venue. So, Saturday morning at 10:30, we're gonna have a great presentation, we're also gonna be popping fresh movie popcorn and having soda for people to come and have that movie time experience in the original theater. So, it's a rare time that the theater will be open to the public, and we want you to come in along with the press and give us your ideas and thoughts. We really need the community's help on this one, and the mayor and I will be hosting this.
And although the staff has done a good job in trying to get somewhat cleaned up, it is very, very dirty. So, I would suggest anyone who's coming to wear jeans or something that they don't worry about getting dirty, because the seats are a little ragged, shall we say.
We'll save the formals for the grand opening.
Yes, yes. So, next item, City Manager's Report on the Palm Springs Airport. Dr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is actually a very exciting, exciting thing for Palm Springs. We just wanted to reiterate that we passed a 2 million passenger mark for our airport, and it's a milestone, and we... This is the third straight year that we've broken our record, so the airport continues to grow. Also, just want to remind everyone that we have over 11 airlines now, I think we're going to 34 cities directly, and that wasn't always the case. This is really exciting, and a big part of this is due to the airline incentive program that the council had approved. And I would just note, there was a time not too long ago when we used to have to pay American Airlines $200,000 just to have one summer flight to Dallas. So, we've come a long way, and I think it really, really reflects well of the work that you've done at the airport and investment over the last several years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Ready.
And Mayor, I do have one other thing. This is actually a very exciting announcement. We have three new members of our executive team in chambers tonight that I would like to introduce to you. So, first, if I could, our new Director of Parks and Recreation, Cynthia Alvarado Crawford is here. Could you stand up, Cynthia? Today's her first day. Welcome. And our new Patrick Tellerico, the Office of Sustainability Manager, the second week, and Gilbert Estrada, our Director of Building and Safety.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the next item is... You've covered all the airports left, David? Okay, next item is City Council comments. Any comments? Councilmember Middleton?
Last week, along with Councilmember Holstage, I was in Sacramento for League of California Cities Policy Committee. We heard a presentation from the Cabinet Secretary Anna Matimosos, I hope I got that pronounced correctly, and from Transportation Secretary Brian Anis. There has been a tremendous amount of conversation since the governor announced his budget plans and his housing plans regarding the potential for cities that do not meet their housing goals to lose some of their transportation funding. What I can tell you based on the conversations that we had in Sacramento on Friday is there are no plans in terms of how to implement any kind of pullback of transportation funding. There is a lot of blue-sky conversation that somehow or another, transportation funding should be linked to reaching housing goals, but there is absolutely no plans that have been presented in terms of how to execute that. And as one can imagine, cities across the state are extremely concerned and very vigilant in making known to the administration that a reduction in housing funding linked to transportation or linked to housing not being achieved is something that would be very problematic. Some specific examples is that in many communities across the state, they are doing everything that they possibly can to make housing more amenable in their community and more amenable to developers, and the developers are just simply not coming. And to penalize a city that is doing everything it can would not be a responsible policy. So, we will see where this actually develops, but I would encourage all of us to stay aware of the issue. I would also, don't overreact to the headlines. We have not seen any policies. Thank you.
That's what we're hosted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last council meeting, Councilmember Middleton and Mayor Protem Corz and I attended the Buzz Bus ribbon-cutting and relaunch. So, we attended that with Sunline. Thank you to Councilmember Middleton for her leadership as the liaison to Sunline and really saving the buzz and making that happen for our residents. I think it's a huge win for our residents and tourists alike, and really proud to have that service rerunning as a quality of life investment for our city. So, thank you to everyone who attended that. It was a really fun event, there were buzz cupcakes, and we got to ride the inaugural ride, the second inaugural ride. So, we hope that that will continue. Please ride the Buzz Bus, that's what's really important now, is using that service if you want it to continue. Sunline is tracking the numbers to see if the ridership will be there for the two years that the city is funding it. So, if you want to see it continue, please use the Buzz Bus. I attended CVAG, Coachella Valley Association of Governments Homelessness Committee. We had a really important meeting. Some people from Palm Springs were there in attendance at Palm Desert City Hall, and we got the report from the consultant that we engaged, the Desert Healthcare District engaged, to do a full analysis of the data on homelessness in our city and in the region, and to provide some best practices and to provide some recommendations about what we should be doing. So, it's a really important report. I asked city staff to attach it to our next agenda, so the full council and the full public will have access. Basically, some of the takeaways is that this... The region, the Coachella Valley, has actually more emergency shelter beds than we have homeless population compared to the city of Riverside, the county of Riverside. We have more beds than our proportion of homeless population and population as a whole. So, some of her recommendations were, instead of investing in more shelter space, and I get a lot of emails every week asking to build a new West Valley Shelter, actually, her recommendations, we need permanent supportive housing. Housing's the only solution to homelessness, and we really need to be investing in housing for all, as opposed to temporary shelter. She also had some recommendations about outreach. Actually, outreach is less effective than you would imagine permanent housing is for getting people permanently off the streets. And so, anyway, I will attach that report to the next city council meeting. The city is holding our quarterly homelessness task force meeting tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Fire Training Center, that's 3,000 East Alejo Road. And so, for anyone who wants to learn more about that report, the Desert Healthcare District and CVAG will be there, please attend. If you want to know more about what we're doing on homelessness, we will report it then. But for me, it's been really important to wait. We worked with this consultant for nearly a year, six months or so, because we need to know the data before we're investing resources, and we need to work as a region because it's a regional issue, and we need to work together with our community partners. On homelessness, we are also having our point-in-time count. That's coming up next Tuesday, the 29th, bright and early at 5:30 in the morning, 5:30 to 9:30. That's an incredibly important moment for the city because we're gonna be counting the people who are living on our streets, and that number gets us funding to address homelessness. So, we want... We still need volunteers, we're still looking for volunteers. So, if you want to volunteer, please contact the city. You have to do a mandatory training session, which is two hours. We're holding one tomorrow, so please contact me or the city if you want more information about that. I also attended, in Sacramento, the League of California Cities Policy Committees, so I was appointed to the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee and the Government Transparency and Labor Relations Committees. So, for housing, we talked about SB 50, which is Scott Wiener's bill on developing housing around transit. We talked about not just having transit-oriented projects and development because we don't have much transit here in our city. I think it would be our one Amtrak station would have multi-story housing along that. So, that doesn't quite work for the whole state, so we're working on that. And then for the Government Governance and Transparency Board, we talked about opening up the Brown Act and talking about using... Allowing the Brown Act to clearly apply to social media and how elected officials are using social media and kind of setting some clear rules about that. That's all the reporting that I have. I have a few requests. So, the Sustainability Commission, at their December meeting unanimously approved a plastic foodware ordinance. This is an ordinance related to plastic waste and straws that we've talked about, so hopefully that can come forward as the commission recommendation. And then Councilmember Middleton brought up, a few meetings ago now, I think, about a resolution about the government shutdown, and you said that maybe not now, it was just the first few days, I think, of the shutdown, but if it continued longer, we should consider doing a resolution. So, with your leadership, I would like to move that we bring forward a resolution against the government shutdown at the next meeting. It's important because we are trying to run... We are running our airport. I know real estate agents are impacted because of the federal government requirements for some of the tribal land properties. It really is affecting the governance of our city at this point. So, hopefully, we can take some action and do what we can to protect our city and our workers.
I strongly support that.
Can we add that to the next agenda? Do you want to vote, or... That's good. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
JR, anything? Okay, one thing I'd like to say this evening is, between our December meeting and our January meeting, was the first time I'd actually gotten out of Palm Springs with my husband, Bob, and gotten away from the city and away from the job for any period of time, and it gave us some time to really sit down and talk a lot together. And in those discussions, we talked about what he and I have done together over the past 38 years, and the fact that we're both facing turning 70 years old this year. And the jux of the discussion was that we were trying to decide all the things we wouldn't do in the next five to 10 years, and jointly, we made the decision that because of all the things we want to do, that I would not be seeking a seat on the new City Council when the elections come up in November. I don't think this is too early to tell people because a lot of people are trying to decide whether to run or not. I know I started my campaign in February, and that's not too early. So, people keep asking me, are you gonna run again? Are you running again? And I keep saying, I don't know, but I do know. And so, to keep saying, I don't know, is not really the truth. So, I'd just like to say, it's been a... I really look forward to the next 10 months and continuing to serve as I have for the past three years the residents of Palm Springs to the very best of my ability, and to work with the City Council to accomplish the goals we've set out for ourselves. Okay? Thank you. Okay, the next item is, since I skipped over, I got this a little out of order here, is the consent calendars. Okay, the following matters will be... We have approval for the consent calendars without... Oops, wait a minute, I just lost my notes. Without items 1A, 1G, 1N, 1L, and 1P. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion made by Councilmember Holstage, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Okay, thank you. First item is item 1A, which is staff authorized agreements and purchase orders for the month of December. That is Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I just was hoping that... Oh, and I hate to do this to Mr. Fuller, who I know is feeling so under the weather and still here working. Marcus, I just noticed that we've got a lot of cost increases on the Police Department remodel rebid. In fact, it looks like we have like six of them or something, and I'm hoping you can explain that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
These are all additional items requested by the Police Department that were not in part of the original bid, and so, it was at the direction and reviewed by the Police Department. So, this wasn't any additional work that was missing from the plans, but it was at our request that they do this work. And they did that without any extension of time. And they did that without any extension of time because, as you know, their time ran out a long time ago. So that issue still.
Okay, so these are additions based on change order requests?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had on 1A. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on 1A? Okay, saying none, we will have, do we have a motion to approve item 1A? Made by Councilmember Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Holstich. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Next item is item 1G, acceptance of the Talkwoods Creek Levy Improvements Project, city project number 0826, and that's Councilmember Middleton.
This will be very quick. The last time that there was levy cleanup, after it was over, I received a few phone calls from residents who live along the wash that the manner in which it was done destroyed a number of bird and wildlife habitats. So I would like to ask that certainly we need to move forward with this, but that we ask staff to work with the county to ensure that every precaution that can be taken to preserve bird and wildlife habitat is done so.
We will do that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve item 1G? Motion to approve made by Councilmember Milton, seconded by Councilmember Holstich. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Okay, next item is item 1L, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1970 of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending Chapter 80.05 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relative to procedures for alteration and demolition of historic buildings, instructions and general revisions to the historic preservation standards, case 5.1454. Councilmember Roberts.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I believe that when we commented on this and gave new direction, and I need my colleagues' memory help on this, that we had decided to round up the date for Class IV structures to 1980 rather than a specific day in 1978, did we not? Did I dream that?
We touched on 1980 originally. Oh, excuse me. Because 1978 was the recommendation of the Realtors based on lead paint.
Yes.
That's right. Thank you.
Jim Franklin even made the recommendation.
I remembered the discussion, and I remembered just landing on 1980. So thank you. So that's my only question of clarification on that, and I will make a motion.
A motion to approve made by Councilmember Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Holstich. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Next item, item 1N, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1973 of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending section 94.08-10, the Palm Springs zoning code providing for a First Amendment to the Virgin Hotel Development Agreement with DTPSB3LLC, revising the performance schedule for construction proposed on Block B1 of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan located at the northeast corner of Museum Way and Bellardo Road, Zone CBD Section 15, and making additional revisions. Councilmember, that was Holstich?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, it was, okay, it went in. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll be very fast on this. Mr. Braun told us during the hearings on this that he didn't have, that he did in fact have financing on this project, and I simply believe we should receive confirmation from him that he does have the financing. And that's something that he can provide at a later date to staff.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. And I think that there were a few representations in public at that meeting, one being prevailing wage for the project moving forward if he uses the TOT program. So we might want to send that back to staff to get some of those agreements, that's all in writing there, that that was added.
That is, that is in, the safe harbor language is in. We tried to address everything that the council had.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Roberts?
Um, no, no, I'm good.
Okay, motion approved made by Councilmember Milton, seconded by Councilmember Holstich. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Okay, next item, item 1P, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1975, amending the Palm Springs zoning code to establish procedures relating to reasonable accommodations. Now, if Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just, in looking at this, I asked this at the last reading. I couldn't tell because there weren't track changes. So I was given the representation that Jim Priest, our attorney, had looked at this and made all of the changes that Inland County's legal services was asking about because they sent a letter recommending some changes to the ordinance. So again, I don't see track changes here, so I want to make sure that all of those are, all of those recommendations are included here in this ordinance.
Yes, they are. I had forwarded a copy of his corrected changes to you via email, and I did confirm that the version that we had in the packet last time was the correct version with the changes. So I will confirm that, yes, we did make those changes.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm for the record here. So thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Roberts. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our consent calendar items that were pulled. Next item, we have no public hearings, and three is legislative. 3A, reintroduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 5.26 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code, reestablishing the hotel operations incentive program. Staff report, please.
Reintroduce an ordinance to reestablish a hotel operations incentive program. On December 19th, this item was brought to you, and there are a number of comments and requests from the council which have been implemented, specifically the addition of prevailing wages and indemnification clause, conformance with 53083 of the Government Code, which requires that for economic incentives, a public hearing be held if the amount of the incentive is over $100,000. A requirement for the TOT calculation to commence immediately, that has been included, and an evaluation of the program effectiveness after four years. The way it was structured was that after a certain date, the program would sunset, but this would be an opportunity to continue the program if we're finding that it's being productive, and I would guess particularly with the Class I hotel, Class I historic structures that would receive 75% of the TOT as that particular carve-out. Other provisions that were added or amended were that hotel operators are not able to participate in the program if they are already in a hotel operations covenant program. We do have an existing program that's ongoing. The definition of a Phase II renovation project had been revised to allow hotels to cease operations if needed during their construction. So there was some discussion about that amongst staff as to how to approach that. The renovation, definition of a renovation hotel would now require that the hotel had been in operations for the previous five years before a hotel operations incentive program is approved for that hotel in that case. One small item, and I haven't had a chance to discuss this with the city attorney, but as it is drafted right now, we have payments going to hotel operators on a monthly basis. We actually do it in a different, we do it annually for some projects, and I would recommend that this be converted to annually as it may increase the workload on the finance staff, not wanting them to have to run the calculations. And in this case, it will be a little more challenging because we're adjusting for the base, which will have cost of living increases to keep pace with inflation so that there's not any kind of a, any kind of margin in there for the hotel operators to take advantage of. They just want precaution to protect the city. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Middleton?
Jay, thank you. I'm on page 11 in the section regarding prevailing wage, and I just want to make certain that I understand correctly. In the past, we have had prevailing wage provisions that require that individuals in firms who are participating comply with state law. In this, we are saying you must pay prevailing wage. Is that correct?
That's correct as written. I'll actually defer to Mr. Kotkin.
Thank you, yes. Lots of council direction from the subcommittee implemented here, and we really put on a belt and suspenders with respect to prevailing wage. You have not only the requirement of prevailing wage, but you have the safe harbor language that was specifically recommended by our labor and employment experts who work with us as special counsel. So you've got, you've got everything you need to ensure that any developer who's availing themselves of this program will pay prevailing wage and will indemnify the city with respect to any dereliction of that duty.
Thank you for doing that, and I'm very, very pleased to support this.
Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify for the public that this hotel incentive program is not to be confused with the new hotel incentive program, which we sunsetted, I think, two years ago, and that this one only relates to existing hotels to encourage the existing and smaller hotels to upgrade their hotels and hotel room stock. And that's all I needed to say.
Okay, thank you. And I think most people do understand that this is not actually taking any money out of the city's general fund. This only takes a portion of the additional TOT that's paid in. So it's a, it's a win-win for everyone. Okay, Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a few questions of staff about some of the changes that were made in this version. So one is that this version doesn't allow phasing of construction, right? So can you explain a bit about the thinking about allowing phasing of construction versus and requiring, versus requiring all the construction to be done at once?
You may have comments on that?
Sure. The city has had challenges in the past on occasion when we've worked with hotel projects and other types of projects with pauses in work that's been, that has been taking place vis-à-vis continuity and nuisance conditions that can arise. So the thought on the part of staff was we didn't want to allow phasing here as to the implementation of the improvements to the rooms and to the common areas to create those sorts of conditions. That's not a condition that is essential on any level. If the council wants to give different policy direction, this is first reading, and that would be perfectly appropriate to strike that requirement.
To me, I think that we already have the requirement that it's completed within 12 months.
We sure do.
So to me, I think it's up to the hoteliers to decide if they want to have phasing, what would work with their operation. So I would like to remove the language about not allowing phasing. I can pull it. So that's on page seven. It's in the definitions. Phase II renovation project means a hotel constructed by a renovation hotel without phasing. So I would ask that the council consider removing that language and any other references to the phasing requirement.
That's the only language.
I'm wide open to that, but I, Marcus, do you have any concerns about the phasing issue of this?
Or David, if you have recommendations either way, or Marcus?
I think that the 12-month is the stopgap, and that probably would be sufficient.
Okay.
Have we had a lot of issues with stopping and starting of these? I mean, these are not huge projects, but some of them could be larger investments. It would make sense to me that they might want to do it phased, especially if they're continuing operations. Do you have any other comments, Marcus? I see you thinking.
The dozen or so that did it the first time, I think the one that comes to mind that was a multi-year was the Alcazar. But I think mostly they, they went in and did it as a, you know, one-phase project to get in and out.
Well, the other thing that is at play is that, you know, they don't start to receive any of the incentive back until they complete it. So that's their incentive and motivation to complete.
To me, I think that they already have incentive to complete it. We have, we're requiring it to be completed within 12 months. I think it should be up to the operator. We shouldn't ban phasing outright if it would work for a project. We want to incentivize small hotels, hotels to use this program.
Honestly, finish in a year.
Right. Counsel, agree? And then my other comment is on the definition of construction and how we're defining that and considering that. So there's a lot of language about renovation and construction. So some questions that were raised were if they wanted to invest in new furniture or another investment into their hotel that wasn't construction or maybe wouldn't be defined as a renovation. How are we defining that under this ordinance? And what was our thinking? And what would be included here? And I'm giving you this question for the first time, so I'm sorry. Usually I work with you ahead of time.
Are you referencing language that's in, in the draft right now?
Yeah, so let me, I can pull it. So for example, on page seven, in that definition that I read earlier, the last paragraph at the end, it says Phase II renovation project means a hotel improvement project constructed by a renovation hotel. And then there's just some other references to construction. So in my thinking and talking to people in the community, you know, I think maybe we would just want to incentivize investments into the hotel if they're going to spend that money on different renovation that isn't construction.
One concern would be we wouldn't want them buying items that can be removed and taken away to, say, other locations outside the city.
How did we do it in the last ordinance? The last TOT? That was just for construction, new construction. So what about for other incentive programs for existing properties?
Well, the ones we had, they had to be fixtures.
Fixtures.
Fixtures that couldn't be taken out.
So if we were to include fixtures in this, I think we want to help them incentivize investment into the property.
I agree with you, Councilwoman. My only concern is that it can be a slippery slope, and I would, and I would want to, again, get the city managers, both of them, their input on that so that we don't find that we're funding other things for this. There'd have to be some clear definitions and some proof so that we're not funding cars and food for restaurants and toilet paper, but actual improvements. So I would want, I would want staff's recommendations on how to refine and define this very clearly. And maybe it's just a list of things that would be covered under the incentive program and a list of things perhaps that are not covered. But I agree with your suggestions.
Is that something that staff could bring back as a recommendation for second reading? Or would we need to include that here?
Could we do that in second reading?
There's a requirement in this ordinance as it's presented here that at the front end in the application, that there be some explanation by the applicant hotel operator as to what's actually happening and that costs are actually projected. And furthermore, on the tail end, that no cost would be paid back in the context of the incentive that's not approved. Now, we could beef up that language. We could add language there that specifies the types of costs and expenditures that will be improved, I suppose. It's implied, it's implicit, that it would be fixtures and things that are hardwired, so to speak, to the property, but we can, we can certainly add some language there. I have the direction that you're giving, and we can implement that.
Or we could just add fixtures.
Add fixtures and define them. You know, I. Add fixtures and define them. You know, I like leaving it a little bit more open because it could be some landscaping. It could be some other things. We just need to be clear that there are limits.
Right.
I wouldn't want to spell it out in so much detail that staff didn't have some discretion, but I do understand the direction you're giving. So, we'll include landscaping. We'll include fixtures that are permanently attached. And we'll incorporate those in definitions where they're appropriate. Also, on the cost recovery, I think, you know, that when staff is approving, that no approval will be issued unless it's as to the appropriate expenditures.
And then I would even go as far as to say we need to be careful with even attached fixtures because would we be against them refurnishing rooms or refurnishing lobbies and things like that? So, again, it's not so much about what's attached. It's just more things about specifically upgrading the hotel rather than paying electric bills or buying food or paying employees. So, it would have to be things that somehow relate very specifically to the upgrade of the hotel or its rooms or its public spaces. So, again, I would suggest a list both ways. And if there's any question, we could leave it to the discretion of staff if there's any question on the part of the hoteliers' mind.
Nothing operational, exclusively facility items?
Things specifically related to the upgrade of the building, facilities, or landscape.
Counsel, equipment, would you say that falls into that category? Typically, there's furniture, fixtures, and equipment that people value.
Yeah, FFNE is actually a very clearly defined term for most hoteliers, and I think that should be included.
I agree.
So, it would be more beyond fixtures that generally aren't removable? So, you would give some discretion for even removable equipment and fixtures?
If they want to refurnish rooms or lobbies, why not?
Disconnect. I think the city manager's question, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, is going to that level of equipment, that could actually be removed from the facility quite easily. Say that one of our hoteliers has two properties. They could buy a piece of equipment that did something very important to the new facility and justify it if they wished. You're comfortable with that, if I hear you. Whether it can be removed or not is of no moment.
So, for us, we're not paying for it. It's a TOT rebate program, right? So, they pay for it, and then if their TOT increases, we can think about it out loud a bit, but if their TOT increases, then they get that rebate. And so, if they buy new furniture and then they remove it and their TOT doesn't increase, and we even adjusted this one to adjust for inflation unlike before. So, you know, anything, if they take it away, then that's something that they invested in their hotel and they took away. It's not anything I think that the city would have lost, right?
I get it. I understand.
We can be specific. If our concern is that they'll buy furniture, say, for their homes and say that it's for the hotel, we can ask for photographs if it's things like that where we would ask for written descriptions of what they plan to do to the hotels. And frankly, we should go back and check. I think that we need some ways to do that. And perhaps, once the work's complete, we should go back to make sure that they spent the money the way they said they did or at least let them know that we may do that to ensure that the program's being used properly.
It seems what you're getting at is an issue of how do we protect ourselves against someone who will claim, "I'm buying this furniture for Hotel X," when in fact, they intend to use it for some other purpose? I would hope that we would have within the contract some language that would ensure that this is being transacted in good faith.
And we have, as I think back now through it, some of the hotels, some of the businesses, you know, the carpet bar fixtures, bar, things of that were a little more fixture-related. But some of the hotels, if I recall, it did include some of the furniture for the lobby, which helped with the overall. So, I understand what you're saying. We can put some language in there. And we clearly do have inspections before we proceed with the actual final TOT.
With the final payment. And then the other thing I would say, just if we're very clear that it's specific to that property, for that property, and to remain on that property. And anything beyond that would be a violation, subject to the return, to the return of the dollars.
Thank you. I just have one other question, and it's about the addition of not allowing the participant to participate in any other city TOT programs. Is that, can you explain a little bit about that addition?
Yeah, I can explain that. We were direct, I was directed by the other member of the subcommittee to make sure that if someone was already receiving this incentive, that they couldn't receive this incentive again.
So, it's just they can't double-dip with TOT programs?
Right. They can't say, "Well, I've improved it, and I'm going to share the TOT, and now I want to improve some more during the same period of TOT sharing."
Could they participate in other city programs, like the facade improvement program, the way it's written?
My recollections, yes, they can.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve made by Councilmember Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Holstich. The motion is on the floor.
Motion passes four to zero.
Next section, unfinished business. First item, item 4A. Consider a resolution adopting a code of conduct for elected officials. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I worked on this on the staff end quite a bit, but this is a subcommittee item, and you have a working subcommittee. So, I'm going to defer to them. They did the lion's share of real, the hard work, the heavy lifting.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'll go first. Councilmember Holstich and I certainly very much appreciated the feedback that we received from everyone. What we tried to do in this document is to simplify it considerably. We've taken it from, I believe, 11 and a half pages down to about five and a half, six pages. We eliminated a lot of examples. We tried to be very clear in terms of some specifics. This is simply a good governance measure. We're defining what I think are, for the most part, longstanding principles in terms of how the city of Palm Springs has operated, that we are a city council, that it's a legislative body, that has a chief executive that is the city manager that's responsible for the management of the staff. And we're defining some of the responsibilities that go in there. This does not supplement or change any existing law that we have. Couple of things that I would like to just highlight on here. On page, it's two, although it's numbered six here. We talk about council members having a fundamental responsibility to communicate with the public. And that's always a very difficult issue when there are constituent issues and constituent complaints because no council member can individually be responsible for reaching a resolution regarding issues that must be handled by staff. Yet, we play a fundamental and critical role in ensuring that that communication is effective between people within our community and the city. And so, we very much wanted to make clear council members can't just simply say, "Don't talk to me. You need to talk to someone from the staff." We have, we wanted to be clear that we have that responsibility. We tried to make some changes in terms of anticipating differences as we move to a district structure. So, in section 7.1, we state every effort should be made by each council member to direct constituent service questions and concerns to the council member elected from that district in which the resident or the business is there. And that's not an absolute bar on anyone else being involved. We know that this is a small town with individuals who get to know one another, but trying to make it certainly more easy. There was one, I want to talk about two issues that I think may have gotten lost. One is section 2.5. "Council members representing the city on regional multi-agency bodies shall vote in a manner consistent with council direction or policy within a previously articulated city policy or program." And that certainly has been something we've identified. But I think beyond that, we need to also say that council members sitting on these multi-agency bodies have to have the ability to exercise their best judgment because most of the issues that will be coming before you on those bodies are not ones that you will have had an opportunity to talk with all of your colleagues in advance on. And it's critical that you exercise your best judgment. Do so in a manner that you think will be consistent with what you best understand to be the majority view of people of your colleagues on the council. But if you get it wrong and you vote for the blue item and your council member colleagues said, "How could you have voted for blue? Everybody knows we like red better here?" Then that's something that's going to happen. And you move on and learn from that experience. The other change that I don't think got across that I wanted to raise was in section 4.5 where it says, "Council members shall not disclose or use confidential information obtained through city service for any improper purposes such as financial, personal financial gain." I don't think that needs to be qualified. I think we should strike for improper purposes and just simply say, "Council members shall not use or disclose confidential information obtained through city service for any reason." And again, this is something that is another example of Palm Springs trying to get ahead of the curve, and I hope it can receive support of all of our colleagues. West Hollywood was an example that was used, but we are not trying to create West Hollywood here. We're simply taking advantage of some work that they had done previously.
Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to compliment you both, and thank you for making the changes that you made. This is much more palatable to me because I think it's much more realistic. I think we can write ourselves into a corner, and I appreciate that you softened this up. I only have one concern that I want to direct to Dr. Reddy and of course, to all of you. It's just a question. On page six, under rules 1.1, the second sentence, really the first sentence, it says, "Council members shall not direct order or make demands on any city employee other than inquiries that can be answered routinely and without my concern is research and support requested." You know, I worry about that a little bit because so often we might need, let's say, our secretary to do a little bit of research. Or very often, I might ask Amy Blaisdell to look into something for us or if she can get press for one of our events. And I'm concerned that this is, again, creates sort of an unrealistic working environment. And my understanding is that generally, if we ask things of staff that aren't routine, they'll go to the city manager for direction on that. And I think I would prefer to see wording along those lines simply so that council is not terrified to ask staff to look into something. Obviously, if it's something the staff's uncomfortable with, I'm sure that their protocol always has been that they would speak to the city manager. And, Doctor, if you could weigh in on that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Just as a practical matter, you're usually looking for a quick answer. And I think maybe to accommodate that, that could say, "Answered routinely and with minimal research and support requested in accordance."
That works for me.
So, I think that would cover it.
So, we would change "and without" to "and with minimal"? Okay.
I have a, may I have a comment just on that point? May I interrupt you for a moment? Thank you. I had noted that rule as well because it doesn't exempt or accept our administrative support, which I believe it should because we do have an administrative assistant who I routinely give direction to. And so, I don't think it fits into this rule. And I believe we had given that feedback before in the last, at the last meeting.
I don't recall, but I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think the catch-all here is, or in accordance with the protocol established by the city manager, and because that position, it works under the city manager, that would be part of the job description in the established protocol. So, that would be the exception that's basically worded in here. So, you wouldn't technically have to change anything. We would reach it through that language.
I'm just thinking about, especially new council members, and if I had read this and how that would read for people who might not know that. So, I always think it's better to spell it out, but I'm happy. Let me look at that. So...
Well, it's easy to find some, we clearly can put some other language in there to get you where you want to be.
We have language in 1.2 that you both drafted that could be imported into 1.1 as well, where you talk about, with the exception of the city manager, city attorney, who work directly for the council. You could identify other members of staff that work directly with the council on a day-to-day basis.
Such as other employees assigned to council?
I think.
Something like that.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just soften that up a bit.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, that's all I had.
Okay, I'd like to comment that I appreciate the subcommittee taking the comments we made the last time and making this work much better this time. But I think it needed for all of us to discuss it. And she did take those changes and make them, so thank you very much. And Councilmember Holstich touched on this, but guidance like this and protocol like this is really important to new people coming on to the council. And we're most likely going to have new people coming onto the council. I know even, we're going to be covering later, the city council procedures for city council meetings. I didn't even know that existed till like three months into my term. And then I said, "Oh, is there guidance for this?" So, I think it's very important that we have these and the staff make sure, and the other council members make sure new council members get them as soon as they come on board. But also, talking about the multi-city agencies we go to, you know, I thank you. Councilman Middleton commented that if we have to make a decision knowing what the general feeling and direction of our council is, to make those decisions if necessary and use our best discretion. But also, if it's really touchy, we can always abstain and say that I don't have the guidance of my council, and I have to abstain on this. It happens occasionally in those types of meetings. And also, one question I'd like to ask on section 4.2 where it talks about, "May have personal, council members may have personal letterhead for use in their day-to-day performances, their duties." It can be misleading if you're writing a letter on a personal opinion or, say, a letter of reference or something. If it's City of Palm Springs and it's got, you know, Councilmember Jones or Mayor Smith or whatever, it could be misleading. But we actually don't have a letterhead. We don't have personal letterhead for use in day-to-day performance of our duties. Actually, I think I've written three in the last three years. But on occasions, if we need them, Dr. Reddy, how is, are you considering printing up a limited amount of stationery that has like the council member's name large and then underneath it, "Council, City of Palm Springs"?
Well, I think that it's good to have individual council member stationery and stationery that lists all the council members. So, you have the flexibility to use when it's just that the council members, on their own opinion on an issue versus it's endorsed by the entire city. So, I think we can accommodate that.
If it says "City of Palm Springs" above it, even though a person writes their personal endorsement or opinion on it, it could be construed as the City of Palm Springs, the way the stationery is. I'm just saying, this 4.2, it's, I think this covers a good point. "May have personal letterhead for use in day-to-day performance of their duties." What are we talking about here on personal letterhead?
Well, I think that's, it'd be, you know, Mayor Robert Moon, Mayor of City of Palm Springs, council member... of Palm Springs, Councilmember Middleton, I think that is enough. Doesn't have to say, other than that, it doesn't say official City of Palm Springs. It's just your title and what you are. I think that's sufficient.
So are you, is the plan, if we, once this is passed, to actually produce some of that?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
So individual stationery and then joint stationery.
Right now, it says City of Palm Springs in big type, and then our name in small letters afterwards. And so that can be, anything that's on that letter can be construed, whether it is or not, as being the opinion of the City of Palm Springs.
And I even go as far as to say, council members can design their own individual letterhead. We can do that, too.
Okay.
So if I can comment on that, because we talked about that as a subcommittee. So we actually, it's not in this, but we had talked about probably only city staff should be usually sending out city letterhead documents because it'll be following an action by the, by the board, by the city council, and then city staff would send that. And only having, so it's, here it says, "City council members may have personal letterhead." But I think we had actually talked about only having letterhead, and that's what you see in any legislative body. So we talked about getting a letter. I got a letter from Diane Feinstein, and it, and it has the seal, and it might have, you know, the legislative body, but it says, "From the offices of Diane Feinstein," or Rob Moon, or whatever it is. So just so that it's clear, that it's speech and comments from the individual because without authorization from the full city council, we can't speak on behalf of the city or the city council itself.
Question here, just so we are in agreement on this. If it's, if it's a lot of routine letters, the ones I sign, almost, almost 99% of them are letters that go in the front of some welcome brochure for a convention or say, Neighborhoods USA, or the Film Festival, or, or something like that, should that be City of Palm Springs, or should it be the name of like Robert El Moon, Mayor, City of Palm Springs?
Well, I recommend like for the, where we, the city's a sponsor and you have those inserts, you know, there'd be, you know, the letter from the mayor, but the letterhead could, should probably list all the council members.
Right, city letterhead.
City letterhead for those kinds of things. The letter would be from the mayor, but along the side would be, list all the council members.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all in agreement before.
I think we're, I think we're getting very close, and we're probably there. And to me, the critical question is, are you expressing a personal opinion or a collective opinion? And those collective opinions belong on full city letterhead. The individual opinion belongs on something that just represents yourself.
And the easy bright line test for me, and this actually makes it easier, is the beautiful thing about this is council speaks through its votes. So if it's voted on, it will be a joint. Anything else, you know, it's just orbit or dicta, right? It's just, it doesn't mean anything until you vote, so then we'd use your joint, but your other personal letterhead would be for, you know, your, your personal correspondence and opinions.
I mean, I've never used city letterhead for anything but thank you notes and things like that, and it, people enjoy getting that. It feels official. And so I just, again, want to make sure we're not painting ourselves into a corner. I guess the personal stationery with city logo makes a little more sense. But again, there's something about the official seal that, that connects to the community really well.
Well, I would recommend that the official city seal will be on all, on all the personal letterhead, too. It'll just be one name, and you'll have the city seal. But there will be a joint letter for your actual formal action.
And thank you, Councilmember Roberts. Those thank yous that we send out, we're able to use the letterhead, those mean something to people, and we don't want to lose that.
No, but as we, you know, this really brings it, makes it very clear that it should be, if it's not an action of the council, it should be on a personal letterhead with, with then the council member, mayor, whatever, City of Palm Springs, not City of Palm Springs and then a small name there.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
I'm taking very careful notes, but I want to point out that the language in this to Councilmember Roberts' comments does paint you into the box of doing what the city manager said, which is to say, that thank you note is on your individual letterhead. It's not on city letterhead per se. And if that's okay with you, then that's fine. That's what the policy says right now.
And that's what we were intending, because we don't want a thank you note to someone who it's a personal thing to be, look like it's being issued from the full city council when there's been no vote and the city hasn't spoken, the city council.
But the city seal will be on your personal, and the city address will be, city hall address will be on there.
The difference would be when we take a vote to send a thank you note to someone on behalf of all of us.
Versus when one of us wants to thank Attila the Hun for his, for his fine work and great actions in history.
Doesn't happen often, but occasionally, the council passes a resolution to support something like the Friends of the Mountains. We did a thing for that, that water generation thing, and that goes on City of Palm Springs because we vote on it and, and it's passed by the council. That would be a different instance. Okay? Any more discussion?
I have more.
Councilmember Holstage?
My turn. I just interrupted all of you. Okay, I just have some comments and suggestions. So Rule 2.2, that's on page seven, it says, "When making public utterances, council members shall make it clear whether they're authorized to speak in an official capacity or they're sharing their own personal opinion." I would like to see that say, "When making public utterances or writings or something like that." I'm thinking about, I think especially in social media, it's really confusing for people to know if I'm speaking in different capacities, in an official capacity, especially if people are campaigning and having political work versus speaking on behalf of the city. So do you think that would be a problem adding or writings to public utterances?
Why don't we say, I like where you're going, and I would say, change that to "in written or verbal communications."
I think that's fine.
Is utter, the definition, utterance?
Utterances just sounds funny to me.
It's not really a normal word.
Why don't we say communications, which kind of covers everything?
Communication.
Yeah.
When making public communications, there you go.
Is a sneeze not an utterance?
Or it could be statements. Statements can be written or verbal.
Statements are communication, either one.
And then I just saw that a few of the issues that we talked about the subcommittee, at the subcommittee level, aren't here. And so you'll have to remind me if we, what we decided and why it's not here. But we had talked about, especially in Policy 7, about districts and making sure that people are representing the city as a whole. One issue that we had talked about is when we get formal requests for appearances or sort of for events or for policy requests, that those get forwarded to the city manager or the full, or the city council. So for example, one, things that we frequently get is someone asks me to ask the city council to take a policy position or join in a brief in litigation or sign on to something, and they're asking in the capacity for the city. And so if that only goes to one person, then it's sometimes lost, it's sometimes not happening, sometimes maybe if that person doesn't want to vote on that issue or take a stand on that issue, even if it's not the will of the majority, they might ignore that. So we had talked about bringing that forward, that requests for appearances or policy requests would be forwarded to the city manager or something like that.
My memory is that what we were suggesting is that any requests for appearance be copied to everyone else, so simply that there's awareness.
Is that in here? I don't see it.
I thought it was. I'm looking for it. I don't have the whole document committed to memory.
But I can't, I'll admit, I can't find it right this moment.
The document that is here is exactly what we got from the subcommittee with all of the comments you made, so I think it's here.
We make mistakes from time to time.
No, I think it's here, and I'm going over it now.
So I didn't, I definitely didn't see the issue of policy requests, so.
It was more appearances, maybe.
So we'll just confirm, I think, if that's all right for the second reading, that those two issues are in here and included. Did you have a comment, Dr. Reddy?
So the appearance one is obviously easy. It's site-specific. A policy one, obviously those, it may be more of a rare, there's a policy specific for a district. I'm just trying to think how we make sure that gets filtered through to where it needs to. So there's just need to think through and find the language for the second reading.
You know, and I think it would be something like, if a council member receives a policy, a request for the city council to take formal policy, that would be a policy position, that would be forwarded to the city staff or something like that, just to avoid things dropping off or city council members not taking action or allowing it to go to the body.
Well, and that scenario is, maybe like Councilmember Middleton indicated, just all such requests are sent to all council members as the catch-all?
It's copying.
It's copying. Because right now, those will either come into, you know, sometimes my office, sometimes the mayor's office, and we try to sort, sort them out as appropriate. But I think I would hear you saying is, you want to copy, just copy everyone, that way you can respond as you want.
Similar, like what we did to the proclamations. If we get a proclamation request, really that should go to the full council so that one person isn't the gatekeeper for requests for appearances, for proclamations, for policy. A lot of times, we get sign-on letters, things like that. Does that make sense?
I think we got, I think we're there.
Okay, that's all I have.
Even though it's not an ordinance, I heard direction to bring this back.
Do we need to, does it need to come back again?
I would appreciate direction to secure the subcommittee's approval of the final revision.
Okay. Okay.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Next item, item under New Business, item 5B, consideration of changing general municipal elections from November of odd-numbered years to even-numbered years. Staff report, please. Discussion of revised city council rules and procedure. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, 5A, discussion of revised city council rules and procedure. Staff report, please.
Mayor, I defer and yield to the subcommittee, which is yourself and Councilmember Roberts.
And, you know, Mayor, I will just very briefly say, as you can see, we made very few changes, and they're outlined very clearly in red, so I would, I would just welcome questions from my colleagues.
And one item that I might add, and I apologize, Mayor, you had asked me about this earlier, and I thought it was resolved, and it is, but it's not as clear. And that's with regard to, it's on Section 2, I would just note, 2.8, 2.8. And the issue is, and because this has always been not as clear as it could be, and it's helpful for staff, is how things come to the agenda when council members, one thing's the agenda. 2.8, basically, I thought it addressed it enough, but we may want to clarify it. It basically indicates that at a council meeting, a council member will, will raise an issue, and then council will give staff direction if you want it to be agendized or, or some other action taken. So it's covered in 2.8. If that's clear enough, I just wanted to highlight it so, so we know that that is the rule we're, we're working with, or if it needs modification.
So in other words, items that council member won on the agenda should be brought up at the previous, previous meeting during the appropriate time, which is the end of our meeting, requesting to put it on. That way, the whole council knows that request has been made.
Correct, because, you know, it's difficult to bring something to the council agenda that one council member has asked. Now, a subcommittee is a little different. We may want to have, language is, is the exception for a subcommittee on, on issues, but it's helpful for us to know that the full council is directing the work that staff would do to bring to the council agenda because this does require usually, you know, obviously resources and staff time.
Yeah, we can't, I don't think we can make that change right now on the fly here, can we?
You can give us direction, and we can implement that when we bring it back.
And again, this wording may be sufficient for council. You may be comfortable with it.
If you want to clarify it, Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you. So this is, because I didn't get that, your comment from reading this language. So tell me, so the, the problem we're trying to solve here is sort of, it's unclear how to bring items to the agenda. So here, it's, explain more your thinking, and then maybe we can incorporate that into the language.
Because you're right, it's not real clear, and it's not, I don't think, under the exact appropriate title, presentation by members. But, but in essence, under council member comments, you, you would ask with respect to a matter that you would like placed on a future agenda. So that's the key thing. So please bring a discussion item on X or, you know, whatever issue that you want to bring. So the rule has been, or the practice has been, that a council member will ask that from the council dais, and then if, if there's no opposition from the council members, we would in essence, and move forward to bring that to the council agenda. If, if council members seem to have a resistance to it, then we would agendize that item for the next meeting for discussion to see formally if you wanted me to bring it. So that's sort of a wishy, a little, little less clear way to do it, but that's sort of been our practice, is embodied in this language here. So, you know, there could be an opportunity to make it more clear, or we may be fine living with the language as it is.
Yeah, so I think that we should have probably a separate provision about agenda development, because this is actually something I've been confused about sitting up here, is we have our agenda, and we always have the city council subcommittee and city managers' comments and reports. And then at the end of the meeting, we have, and this is on page 13, city council and city manager requests an upcoming agenda development, and we're not strict about that. And we frequently ask for things in that first section, and that's because we want to do it in public and not at midnight at the end of the meeting. And so I actually think more clarity, especially because this is what new council members are going to be using about how you want to do agenda development. And, and I mean, if we want to, we should have more formal of a process about how to bring items forward, especially for staff, as you're getting five council members throwing lots and lots of things at you, and sometimes it seems to me unclear if we're just saying, "Let's talk about this in the future," versus, "Let's formally add this to the agenda." So I would strongly support having a separate provision about our process about getting items on the agenda, however formal you, your recommendation would be on that.
Actually, I think that's probably the best solution, and to get there, what I would recommend is that, so council can go forward with this here, this basically embodies, I think, what you're trying to accomplish. I would like to continue working with the subcommittee on the specific agenda development section, which we could just bring back as a separate item when, when that's ready to go, and then it would be incorporated.
Okay, I'd like to point out, most of the, a lot of the changes in here just represent changes we've gradually made over the last year or so. Like on page 13, under Agenda, you can see, you know, the order has been changed somewhat. That's just, that's nothing new. That just reflects what we actually have made over a matter of time. Another thing that's rather significant is page, page 20, which is Section 4.4, Decorman Order, and a couple other short sections after that. City Attorney gave us modified language for those sections to reflect better First Amendment requirements. And also, one thing, I made a question mark here because when we, this is something I added after Councilmember Roberts and I had met, because it came up in the last election, when we were at the last meeting. On non-election years, the election of the mayor pro temp shall be conducted during the, I put first meeting in January. That might not be a good idea. Should it be, is it best to put it, starting next year, the first meeting in January? Or would it be?
Haven't we traditionally done it about that time? I think we pulled that just because it's, traditionally, we've done that.
Is it fine? Okay, I just want to make sure everybody noticed that.
You, you okay with that?
You don't think it would be the, a meeting in December when people are newly sitting?
Because right when they're being seated? On an election year, actually, that would make more sense. Why wait? So maybe on an election year, it would be on the night new council members are seated and on non-election years?
Yeah, it says that. It says it in accordance with, the old, the existing language is in accordance with the Palm Springs City Charter, Section 302, "At the first regular city council meeting following a general municipal election..." meeting following a general municipal election, in which newly elected councilmembers are sworn and seated, at the first regular city council meeting following the anniversary of that date for any year, in which note, the city council should designate one of its members as mayor pro temp." I just added, on non-election years, because we were only covering election years there.
Well, I think non-election years, excuse me, I dropped my pen, has always been January, hasn't it?
Okay, that's what, it just wasn't formalized.
And I guess it doesn't really matter, other than just following a year's timetable.
It could be either.
The only thing I want to offer is that it's not set yet, because you haven't decided it yet, but at some point, you're going to adopt a procedure through which the city of Palm Springs will select a mayor. And it seems to me, you may wish to punt on this issue, and have that particular item, this issue, addressed in the same resolution that you ultimately will adopt for selection of your mayor.
Or simply ad verbiage suggesting that mayor pro temp would be selected at the time a new mayor is selected.
That would be great.
Because that kind of covers us regardless of what the date is, and I think there are already protocols of when mayor would be selected.
I would, I would second that, and I think the subcommittee is very close to bringing a proposed resolution on that issue.
Okay, so we just don't, we just take out that sentence right there that's been added?
Or do we simply want to add, mayor pro temp would be chosen at the same time that a new mayor is rotated? Would that kind of cover it, in those?
Well, this is existing for now, but that, we can, when they...
Well, he can bring this back in a second reading.
Well, yeah, it's not an ordinance, we're going to bring it back anyway. Right now, it's here for discussion.
Okay.
I agree with making...
You're giving us direction, we're writing it down.
Yeah.
So mayor pro temp to be selected at the same time as the mayor.
Concurrently.
Okay, so everyone in agreement? Councilmember Holstig?
Did you have other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to make a few. One, I found a his in there, talking about the mayor, I think, or councilmembers. Page 21, his integrity, character, motives are assailed, so if we can make sure we use gender-neutral language.
Oh, Christie, didn't you see the one provision that only men will be mayor for the city of Palm Springs?
Well, only men have been mayor since 1938, here in the city of Palm Springs.
Well, we've been, we've been following the rules.
So we need to change our code, so that one day, we can have a her or a their, them. Let's see what other comments I had. You know, you brought this forward to me to reopen here, so I got to make this comment, is that I still strongly believe that public comments for non-agenda items should be at the beginning of the meeting. So I know that this, that the previous council decided to move that, and I disagree. I think it needs to be at the beginning of the meeting. I think our job is to hear from the public, I think people who work, or people who have kids, or people who, for all kinds of reasons, can't be here until midnight. I think it's really, really important to have us do our job of listening to the public. So I know that's been an issue in the past, with lots of people taking that time to make community announcements, and get on our local TV, and that sort of thing, but I just, I wanted to make that comment. I would love to see that change, because we need to have an opportunity for the public to be in front of this body.
And, and just for the record, that was done, that was a balancing act. So what we found is that when we had all comments at the beginning, everybody gave their comments at the beginning on every issue, simply so that they could go home. That meant that anybody that was here to speak on a specific issue paid a severe penalty. So we were trying to find a way to make sure that the people who had to be here to speak on an issue, or that it was vital, didn't have to sit here for the entire night, and that's what was happening. In those days, Christie, we were hearing issues, we were opening our agenda at 10:00. And that was because, it wasn't the grandstanding aspect, we always want to hear from the public, but it was to make sure that we spread the comments throughout the entire meeting, and to try to find a balance. So, I'm not trying to talk you out of your, how you feel, I just wanted you to understand why we went in that direction. It wasn't to keep anybody from speaking, it was simply to try to balance the public comments. So, I still very much support what we did, not because we did it, but because I think that we have proven over time that that's actually worked much better. And we've had our meetings flow in a more consistent manner, and it's more well-balanced. And those that want to speak to us, definitely speak to us. And, and again, a big part of that was also recognizing that there are many ways that the people can contact us, including social media, or they can write us, or email us, or write letters, or do that crazy thing people used to do, where they actually pick up the phone and call you. And I've seen that I get more calls since we've done that, and I actually like that. I like that, that direct communication better. So, I just wanted to reiterate why we went down that road.
It's actually seemed to work better since we changed it.
It might work better for us, but it might not work as well for the people who want to come to city council and speak to us as a body, which is different on the record, on TV, in public, which is different than calling me. So, so again, I will continue to keep that position. I would be interested from staff, if we do bring this back, what's the practices of all of, of all of the Coachella Valley cities? I know some of them split it up differently, so if there are best practices, or if the League of California Cities has best practices for that, because I know we're like no place else, but it'd be good to just sort of follow the practices that most of our cities are following, too.
I think, I think what we need to do is work, create policies that work for us. I'm very grateful for the help that we get from other cities, but I think what works best for Palm Springs may not work as well for other cities. And I would also suggest that we are not eliminating anybody's right to speak to us on any issue, we're simply creating an agenda that makes more sense for timing.
And, and when I've talked to people from other city councils, usually, the number of public speakers we have greatly surpasses the number, probably all the rest, the eight of them have together. We just have a lot of people in our city who like, who want to come speak and have opinions that are involved. We're a very involved city, and so we get a lot of people who want to come speak on agenda items. And as JR said, I agree that we should give the people who want to speak on agenda items priority to speak before we go into those items.
I will throw out one thing. This was policy that actually Councilman Kors and I wrote, when he and I were working on this together. And it was at a time that it was vital that we opened this up, because our meetings were running well into midnight pretty much every time, and we were all exhausted, and staff was wrecked. One thing we did consider was perhaps having a limited number of public comments at the beginning, capping it for the first 30 minutes, or something like that. We just never could really figure out who would get that, those time slots. And maybe there are things that we can do to institute that, and I'd still be open to that. Again, it was really about balancing time and giving, as the mayor pointed out, priority to those who had to be here, who had to speak, people who drove from long distances, and they didn't have a choice whether they could be here or not. Where public speakers who are just here to talk to us about things have a choice.
JR, I, you know, you and I discussed that at our subcommittee meeting, and I added the language in here that you and I agreed on, and the city attorney took it out.
I wanted to speak to that, Mr. Mayor. I reviewed the law on this issue very carefully, and it's very clear from the Brown Act that you can limit debate and discussion on a particular topic with respect to any limitation that seems reasonable. The key concept here is reasonable. And you could, if you were going to have an initial public comment prioritized, I presume by the submission of slips, and then allow subsequent public comment at a later time in the agenda in the evening, continue that. What would seem arbitrary, and this is the reason I interjected on the 30-minute rule that had been proposed, is it seems that it's a little bit arbitrary. There may be topics that 30 minutes is not nearly enough, there may be topics that 30 minutes is way too much, and for general public comment, if there's 40 people that want to speak, 30 minutes doesn't really allow for more than 15 of them, right?
Which is why we hit abandon that concept originally. We couldn't find a way to do that and have it make sense.
But I want to emphasize, and to the mayor's point, as long as we're reasonable, we can limit discussion and time. We just, we can't arbitrarily do it.
I would like to interject that I'm very open to what Councilmember Holstig is recommending, but I'm not there yet, if that makes any sense. I think there may be a time when we will be able to make changes that would allow for more open-ended public comment at the beginning of our meetings. But we still find ourselves very, very frequently in meetings till 11, 12 o'clock at the evening, and so, until we can get a better handle on meetings that are over at a earlier time, I just don't think we can open up, open into public comment at the beginning of meetings.
If I can comment, because I really like that idea that the subcommittee brought forward, having set time, so we wouldn't be able to, the city attorney in that answer, so we wouldn't be able to have a section for public comment, the first 15 speakers, and then adjourn that public comment on non-agenda items to the end of the meeting.
I think you could do that. I think that'd be fine.
So what was the 30 minutes and being arbitrary about?
When you set time limits with respect to any item, which you can do, you have to be reasonable.
So a number, the number of speakers would be fine, it's just the period of time would not be fine.
Correct. And if you wanted to actually limit public comment, we'd have to start taking a look at how many speakers routinely show up, and what's reasonable as a limitation.
I don't think we want to limit public comment.
I didn't think so either.
We want to allow for public comment in different periods of time, so that it works for people, because I think doing it at the end of the meeting precludes pretty much all parents from speaking at a meeting.
I can, I can work much more closely with the subcommittee on this specific issue. I'm open to anything that isn't unreasonable as a limit on public comment as a general matter.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. So we have guidance to, on how to move forward with this. We weren't, we're not voting on this, correct? We're just...
Correct, it's not a vote, but we clearly have more work to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item, which is item 5B, consideration of changing general municipal elections from November of odd-numbered years to even-numbered years. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, due to a change in state law as before 15, most cities have adopted a plan for transitioning from odd-numbered to even-numbered year elections. Currently, Palm Springs' general elections occur in November of odd-numbered years. This is a request for city council to consider and provide direction on the various options for transitioning to even-numbered election years. The options are outlined in the staff report, and I defer to the city council, ad hoc subcommittee on the CBRA.
Mr. Mahin, thank you. Councilmember Kors has been the individual who has most closely worked on the law with relation to this, and what I would like to suggest is, we certainly receive any comments that any of our colleagues have. I think some of the questions are fairly straightforward, that need to be resolved, but that we defer this until the next meeting, when all five of us can be here to cast a vote on this issue.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, do we have a motion to table till the next meeting?
Moved.
Motion by Councilmember Roberts, taken by Councilmember Milton, motion is on the floor.
Well, we're not actually tabling it, aren't we actually setting it to a date certain?
I suppose set to the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said table.
To the next meeting.
Okay.
Motion passes four to zero. To table this to the meeting of February 6th, to the next meeting of February 6th.
Yes, to the next meeting. Item 5C, approval of pre-qualified contractors and authorization to proceed with bidding the Palm Springs International Airport Ticketing Hall Expansion, FAA AIP Grant Number 3-06-0181-054-216. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are very pleased to bring this forward for your consideration tonight. This is a big change at the airport coming, that we've been working on for the last several years. This is regarding the airport ticketing hall expansion. And just briefly, this is an important project to address, as Dr. Reddy mentioned, our exploding passenger growth through the airport, and addresses the circulation and queuing deficiencies in the ticketing wing, as well as addressing much-needed improvements behind the scenes to the TSA baggage screening area and systems that address that component of the airport. And these, these elements were previously provided to the council when they reviewed the design development drawings. The item before you tonight is related to the final construction drawings and prequalification of contractors. So I just want to toggle between these two slides to show you, the yellow area is essentially the public queuing space, which is really constricted where the airline counters are. And the net effect of this project is all behind the scenes and expands the public space by about 19 feet. And then the, the pink areas are all the airline terminal offices, and the blue area is the new combined efficient TSA screening and baggage system handling area. As I mentioned, there were prior approvals granted by the council in May to move forward with design development. The project did go through the Architectural Advisory Committee last July, I'm sorry, in July 2017. And then, in November 2017, the council approved the preliminary design and selected a monochromatic color palette for the interior flooring and ceiling finishes. And here's some slides that just show the final design. So this is just to emphasize, this is probably the biggest piece of this project, and it's very complicated and long lead item that we have to work on, getting this scheduled for all of these pieces to line up, for this to be constructed next summer in 2020. This is like an eight-to-10-month lead item. There's only a few vendors that actually construct these systems. In the back, behind the terminal, at the baggage makeup carousels, once the bags are screened, they go to these carousels, and that's where they're routed to each aircraft. Those will have shade canopies that the AAC reviewed and approved. And this was what the council previously reviewed, and the top showed a warmer color palette, and the bottom a monochromatic color palette. The council chose the bottom monochromatic palette, and the design, final designs have been completed with that direction. And the whole design is still holding true to the mid-century modern design of the terminal. Here's some renderings of the expanded space near the ticket, ticket counters, incorporating the stone veneer. That's what the ticket counters will look like. They're utilizing, what's it called, Tom, common space, common airline shared use, that you see now in all the newer airline terminals. This is the transition between the south and north ticketing halls, and the south hall has really been expanded in size. There's been a few cases where we do prequalification of contractors. We did it with the downtown parking structure on Barista, we did it with the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and we've also done it here. State Public Contracting Code and our municipal code allows the council to prequalify contractors when there's a public works contract, project of significant complexity and specialty, and this is definitely one that we felt needed to have prequalified contractors. So the city released a solicitation last August, five responded, and it's really a pass/fail. There were specific requirements for qualifications, they had to have experience with operating terminals doing these types of projects. Four of the five were deemed qualified, and the fifth one, the Wheat's Company, was deemed not qualified, particularly because they hadn't listed any relevant experience in an operating terminal. The current cost estimate is 28.2 million, and as I mentioned, this will allow us to proceed with bidding to the four prequalified contractors. And once we have that low bid, then we can proceed with what's detailed in your staff report, the process to do the bonds, the bonds that are paid for through passenger facility fees. And what we're requesting you tonight is to approve the four prequalified contractors, actually determine, as we've recommended, the one qualified, non-qualified contractor, and approve the plans and specifications and authorize bidding. Tom Nolan's here, he can certainly fill you in on any of the details, but that completes my report.
Questions of staff, Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. This is unrelated to prequalified contractors, but Dr. Reddy, when we did a walkthrough with the director of the airport, who I know is here tonight, I know we spent some time also... I know we spent some time also talking about changes to the north end or the north hall. I know the TSA expansion was going to eliminate some existing, potentially eliminate some other businesses, and we talked about adding a bar or something over on the north end. And I never really heard the end of that piece of it, and I was wondering where we were with that.
Tom can answer specifically, but that's a, a separate piece that is on a separate course, and Tom's going to explain where that is. But the larger TSA piece is also going to be part of this in some fashion. So Thomas, please.
Yeah, so Tom, I know some of that...
Testing, testing. My, I'm a, Councilmember.
You don't have to unveil the entire thing if it's not ready, but I just wanted to make sure all the components that we discussed
They are.
Are being included in that, that north, I guess what would be the north hall.
They are. The good news is that larger bar, which exists today, will remain.
Oh, excellent. Okay.
It's going to remain. And if, in the future, that has to move, we will have those provisions in the widening of that hallway to add possibly a bar area.
So you were able to get what you needed with respect to TSA expansion?
We did. We worked a little harder on that. We were a little more innovative, and we maintain that. And, and the city manager did allude to the fact that the queuing checkpoint in that is being addressed also in 2020, with some of it also being addressed this fall. So the combination of those two initiatives will resolve both the short-term and the long-term need for additional queuing lanes.
You answered my question, Tom. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
I think this is just a fabulous project, and I am thrilled that we are getting to this point. This is a question just to, really to get it on the record. The original estimate was 21 to 22 million dollars for the project. If I read correctly, we're at 28.2 million now in terms of the estimate. None of this money comes from the general fund. This is all being revenues that are being produced through the airport revenues.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Just need the screen. There we go. There it is. Motion approved by, made by Councilmember Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Roberts. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. Item 5D, presentation of the 2018, 2018 pavement management program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm hopeful that this will shed some light on all the progress we've made over the last four to five years on pavement maintenance in the city. So here we go. As detailed in the staff report, and I'll be brief in my presentation and welcome any questions, this is an update to a prior pavement management report prepared in, I believe the inspections were done in 2014. The report was reviewed in 2015. And as all of you know, that report's been used consistently as the basis for identifying streets for repairs based on a worst-first approach. The report reviews the condition of each city street and determines a pavement condition index, or PCI score. And that's the basis for determining which streets we move forward with. This is a summary of our overall street network. So we have about 26.6% are arterials, 20% are collectors, and over half are residential local streets. And I'm, I'm sorry, I, we have, I'll explain centerline miles. Centerline miles are essentially what we go by. That's just along the centerline of the street. Lane miles involve calculating how many lanes. If it's a four-lane street, you multiply the centerline mile by four. And so it's just another metric for how much pavement we have. But as you can see in the table, we have 50.8 million square feet of pavement, and that's a, a very impressive asset that the city owns. In fact, that asset is estimated, if I can find it, it has an estimated value of 745 million dollars. So I'll just quickly go through this, but the pavement management program is a very essential, important tool for us to use, because it stores and retrieves data. It's the database for our system of streets, and it allows us to do an objective method of determining what streets to move forward with for repair. The way they do this, and I'm going to welcome your questions, because our good consultants have waited tonight and are here. In fact, one of the men here was involved with the visual inspections. And what they do is they go through and review each street segment and look for these eight common distresses. And this methodology has been used for decades and was established by the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's a, we take ourselves out of the mix. This is an objective approach by, by a, a professional third-party engineer that's experienced in this very scope of work. And so those are examples there of the types of distresses that often occur in street pavement. And obviously, the more distressed types and quantity of those distresses on each street, the lower the pavement condition index. Pavement condition index, as I mentioned, varies from 0 to 100, 0 being worst, and 100 being brand-new pavement. We've also since implemented a letter grade score to help people understand, well, what does a PCI of 87 mean? Well, we, we, we rate that as a good condition, meaning your street has a, has an A, and so forth. And here's some just photo examples of what these PCI scores generally look like. Obviously, 100 is a brand-new street. An 83 has had some wear and tear. As I noted in the staff report, asphalt, if you don't know, is essentially just oil and, and gravel, crushed miscellaneous base. And so as, as the oil dries out over time, it becomes brittle, and that's when that, those distresses appear. We have the benefit of, in the desert, of having a great environment for preserving asphalt, because we don't have freeze and thaw. We don't have a lot of rain, and it's that, those effects that really tear up streets. And that's why in back east, you see, streets are in a lot worse condition than, than where, where we live. And then here's an example of a 70, and a 50, and a 25. So it gives you a sense of what the engineer looks for when he's out there evaluating each street segment. And here's what I want to show you. So in the, over the last four years, I was, I was not happy to see only a four-point increase. But what I've learned is that absent doing any work, our street system degrades by a point or two, just naturally. So had we not done any work, we would have been in the low 60s or even lower. But we actually improved four points based on all the investments we've made over the last four to five years. And you can see some significant improvements based on arterials, which are a priority, and also with our residentials, because a lot of the worst streets in the city were local residential streets that prior to Measure J and our limited budget that we had before, we just simply couldn't get to the local streets that needed the repair. And this graph shows in red the quantity in square foot of streets that had good, starting on the left, satisfactory, fair, poor, and very poor. And so you can see, the blue represents where we're at today. And so we've made significant progress in the quantity of good streets and in fair streets. And what's really marked, demonstration of progress is on the right-hand side, where the very poor streets, which is where we focused our attention. We've really decreased the, the quantity of streets in that condition. The pavement condition, the pavement management program includes a table identifying the overall pavement condition index of each recognized neighborhood. We've ensured that the new neighborhoods added since the last report have been reflected. And, and so the overall centerline miles and condition of each of those neighborhoods, of the streets in those neighborhoods are identified. And we should have added a final row, but the, the last row is not assigned. And those are streets that aren't located in any designated neighborhood. So it's interesting, because we have 105 centerline miles that are not in designated neighborhoods, but we have 140 centerline miles that are. So over half of our streets are located in a designated neighborhood. So we have 245 centerline miles of streets within the city. And just briefly, this is the, the generally accepted life cycle of pavement, and why it's important to capture pavement before it deteriorates, because it's, the steep decline in its condition leads to significant increases in the cost of the required repairs. I think I've consistently said in the past, it's 50 cents or so a square foot to do a, a micromill slurry seal and re-strive, re-stripe the street versus about $253 to do a reconstruct or grind and overlay. So it's, it's five times more expensive. So in a perfect world, we'd have all of our streets into a good condition and have the sufficient funds to do a slurry seal every five to seven years to keep those streets from degrading to the point where they need further repairs. This table identifies all the work we've done in the last five years. We've, we've done repairs on over 22 million square feet of pavement, which is over 40% of our street system. Majority of those repairs have been on local residential streets, as was noted in the prior graph. I think this is really telling, is that in 2015, in the 2015 report, the backlog of deferred maintenance on city streets was estimated at 76 million. And that's been reduced by half, over half, to 36 million. And that's just reflecting the investment the Council's made over the last five years. Again, the PCI doesn't really dramatically increase, because we're basically chasing ourselves. With all the money in the world, you're still chasing yourself to keep all the streets in good condition, and they just naturally deteriorate every year. So the report that was included in your packet identified a couple of scenarios. If we had no money, if we maintain current funding of 4 million a year, and then to maintain our current pavement condition index requires an investment of 5 and 1/2 million a year, and then if we have more money than that, the recommendation from the consultant would be 6 and 1/4 million a year, just to really maintain and improve our PCI. And these graphs really tell the story. So if you do nothing, obviously, your condition's going to plummet, and that's the one line graph. And then the bar graph just shows your increasing backlog of deferred maintenance, which just significantly increases. If we maintain what we're doing, the pavement condition's going to fluctuate a little bit, but it will, it's projected to, to decrease slightly, and as well as our backlog of deferred maintenance to what's estimated at 69 million. If we invest 5 and 1/2 million a year, again, it maintains a pavement condition index of 73, and slightly reduces estimated backlog of deferred maintenance in the future. And then this is just another scenario that with slightly more money, we're elevating our pavement condition index and keeping our backlog of deferred maintenance to 55 million. So we definitely recommend we maintain 4 million a year for asphalt repairs. In the not-too-distant future, we will end our six or seven years of Measure A bond payments, which are a million a year. So that'll free up another million for local street repair. And we have increasing funding coming in through the gas, new gas tax. So there could be a scenario where we can get to that 6 and 1/4 million as soon as that bond payment is, is over, and I think in the next year or two. And we will continue to update this payment management program, because it is a living document, and focus on arterial and collector streets every two years, and residential streets every four years. We do suggest we continue with the worst-first approach, and we will make this report public for full inspection on our website through OnePS to all the neighborhoods. We anticipate and welcome all of the questions that will come. But we, we see this as a step forward to continuing our, our efforts to improve our city streets. So with that, I'll, I'll end my report, but I welcome any detailed technical questions to the consultant, and I'm happy to answer that I'm able to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One quick question. I know, I know from talking to you, you've, you've been working very hard over the last couple of years to coordinate with Desert Water Agency, Edison, Spectrum, and other utility companies, because, especially in the past, we'd pave, you'd pave a road, and three months later, one of the utilities comes and digs it up, and then they patch it, and it's just not the same. Are you making progress? Are they working with you better than they used to?
Yes. We, we learned early on that the oldest worst-conditioned streets have the oldest water lines. So when we reconstructed, particularly in Old Las Palmas, the first project, when we reconstruct these streets, we're actually doing it in an economic and efficient way, with pulverite, pulverizing the asphalt and mixing it into the road base, and then paving over that. Well, that effort, that work vibrates the water lines, and they were susceptible to breaking. And so now we're coordinating with Desert Water Agency and identifying any water lines that they're going to replace in the, in the, in the near future. The problem is, is they have a lot of water lines to replace, and they're five, 10, 15 years out. So we're not deferring street maintenance that far, but we understand that from time to time, there might be some patches that are required, because there are some breaks that might occur in some of those water lines. But we are definitely coordinating to the best of our abilities with the utility companies to schedule their, their repairs.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Okay. Marcus, thank you. Outstanding report, and I am just thrilled that, over the last few years, we have repaved 40% of our streets. As I'd mentioned earlier, I was at the League of California Cities Transportation Committee meeting, and according to the Department of Transportation, the statewide average PCI score is 64.7. So I am really looking forward to going to my next neighborhood meeting, wherever it is, and saying, our average score is better than the state's score. So, but, and again, a couple of these questions are going to be to get them on the record. One of the things that we've had an awful lot of phone calls and emails coming in indicating that somehow or another, people are arbitrarily manipulating these PCI scores. So did anyone ask you to change any PCI score, and did anyone on staffs change any PCI score from what was objectively identified by the outside experts?
No.
Thank you. I'm sorry I have to even ask that, but it's there.
Can the witness step down now?
No. I've still got a few more. What I understand you're recommending is where there are streets that you want to repair, and they all have the same PCI score, and we're not able to take and repair all of the streets that have a score of, say, 55. That what you want to do is, in those instances, prioritize based on the worst-to-best average PCI score for that particular neighborhood. Can you explain that just a little bit?
Certainly. Based on the 2015 PCI scores, we were able to get to around a score of 54. Now, that's changed, because streets have, scores have fallen. And so in the updated reports, and I think it's because there was an explosion of street construction in the 60s and 70s in the city. So we have a lot of streets that have generally the same condition. And so looking at the updated report, there's 126 streets that all have the same score of 55. And that's 2.9 million square feet of pavement, which is probably 9 to 10 million dollars. So we won't be able to do that all in one project. And so the idea would be to go back to the table that shows the overall pavement condition of each neighborhood, and then identify, based on worst neighborhood to first neighborhood, streets that have a 55. And then go to the next neighborhood and pick those streets that are 55, and so on.
And that will only be for the streets where there is a tie. It's not going to be that if a street has a score of 50, that just because its neighborhood happens to have a score, that, that particular street won't be done.
Correct.
Okay. And 9 to 10 million dollars to do everything up to 55?
No, unfortunately, that's just the streets that have a 55. I didn't calculate, under the new report, the cost of doing all the streets up to a 55. 55, but it's...
So if we do $4 million, $5 million this year, how high of a PCI score do you think you will get to? And I know this does depend on where the bids actually come in.
So some streets that had a, and these were the details we were trying to vet with the consultant, because we use the same exact consultant. In fact, the same gentleman was involved in inspecting the streets the last time. So there's consistency in the methodology of how this individual evaluates the streets. But as an example, in 2015, there were some streets that had recently had repairs. They had been slurried and crack-filled, and so they had a higher PCI score than perhaps was reflective of what its condition was because it had recently had repairs. And so over the last five years, it's, those cracks have reflected. So that PCI score has dropped. So based on a $5 million budget, we could probably get through, in the updated report, to a score of 47, 47, 48, maybe.
That's still pretty low.
Yeah.
Okay. Almost everybody out in the public, their first question is going to be, "So when is my street going to get repaired?" And I think it would be very helpful, to the extent we can, to produce a list that does show streets from worst to best and gives at least some idea as to what the dollar values are to do particular groupings of streets so that, as we start to try to respond to the public, we're in a position to be able to say, "With your score, it is likely or unlikely that we are going to get to you in this year or..." Okay. And I think that that covers my comments at this point. Thank you.
Councilman Roberts?
Written and complete report, I need to express my disappointment that we can't talk you into changing PCI scores because my street sure needs to be redone. But while you were under oath there and announced that no one had tried, I guess I won't try at this point. Humor aside, and following along the lines of Councilwoman Middleton, I imagine there's some special software you use to create this report. And I'm wondering if there's any way that this software could be manipulated where someone could specifically ask at least the condition of their street, and then with that number, they could cross-reference to what that actually means. In the case of my street, it's a 60. And then there could be a simple explanation saying, "A 60 is about a middle range. It's not a top priority." And then, as Councilwoman Middleton expressed, it might say, you know, you are not, your street is not likely to be in the queue for the next year or two. Is there any way that we could have something that simple? I know that's a complicated bit of software, where someone could literally type in their street or their address and have their street condition pop up with the explanation next to it of what that number means?
I think it's even better than that. So we now have a GIS staff person, so I'm going to put Aaron Brown on the spot. But the idea is, we're going to have this report tied into our GIS system so somebody can select their street on the map, and it'll pop up with all the information about it. And we can populate that kind of information and estimate its schedule for their repair.
So that's great news. I'm sure we're all excited about that. And what I'd like to suggest now is that we put a very concentrated promotion on that. I think the community would be thrilled to have access to something like that, and I suspect we'd be pretty cutting-edge by doing that. And again, thank you for this great report. I think it's the best work you've done on this since I've been on the council. Thank you.
Councilman Holsted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to our Assistant City Manager for all your work on this. He's an incredible public servant, what I've seen him go through about these PCI reports and all the constituent and public questions about that. So you've really, you've done an incredible job, and you've really been responsive. So thank you for all of your work. Just for the record, for anyone complaining about streets, my street is 41, has a PCI of 41, which is nearly very low, and I've never once complained to Marcus because I trust the process. And so here, we're using an incredible, transparent process where we hired an outside consultant to do this really, really comprehensive report. So thank you. I think we're using excellent process. I think it's very transparent for the public. I would echo my comment, the comments of Councilmember Roberts. I really would like to see a system where people can research it and look it up so that our Assistant City Manager isn't constantly responding to emails and requests about individual streets because that's important, but he does really important work, and we need to make sure that people can just access this information. So my questions are, and my comments mostly, so this is really helpful. I think the numbers about the amount that we have to invest every year just to maintain our streets and then really to not be losing ground in the future is a bit terrifying sitting up here because we really need to spend some money here to keep this going and not fall behind like we have before we had really revenue sources for that. So my question is here, so I see that there are different recommendations. Really, this is going to go through the budget process, right? So this will be, the allocation will be a decision that we'll make, and we'll bring this back up when we decide on the final budget for the next fiscal year, right? So we don't have to give recommendation to staff about what amounts we're looking at. I'd like us to talk about, and for the committee, that higher number because it's terrifying in looking and seeing the overall amounts that are coming forward in the future, and spending that down as much as possible, I think, makes sense. I had a question about the worst-first model with the neighborhood second factor. So in your report, you talk about the worst, we're going to prioritize the worst streets first, which of course is the best way to do it. And then you talked about to do cost savings. We would look at neighborhoods. Is that for economies of scale so that we're doing it all at once in a certain area? I didn't quite follow that full part about the neighborhood factor in that assessment, and I expect that's the number-one question that we're going to get on that.
Yeah. If I could have the PowerPoint back up, please. So in this table, we have an overall PCI score for each neighborhood. And so what we would do is sort this by lowest PCI score to highest PCI score. And I realized, Councilmember Middleton, we'd also have to address streets that are unassigned. So we'd have to come up with a fair way to include streets that aren't in neighborhoods. And we could do it based on a pro-rata share. Half of the streets are the same score that aren't in neighborhoods, and half are. But we would basically look at each neighborhood based on their overall pavement condition. The one that has the lowest, if the tie was a 55, we would pick their streets that have a 55. Then we would go to the next neighborhood that has the next lowest overall PCI score and select their streets that have a 55. So that's just one method of how we can get through streets that all have the same condition. Now, I have staff here, and I have one at home that's watching and texted me and said that actually, the report goes out to four decimal places. But I don't know that we won't, that, you know, we've been publishing this rounded to the nearest digit. So there is, there is a way where we could actually get to that level of detail and do it to the fourth decimal place. But I think we're getting to find a point there, so...
So it's not actually for economies of scale, meaning we want to save money by doing it all in one neighborhood? It's to spread the work?
To be fair, yeah, to be fair to the process. And what we found in the last four or five years is, we've grouped these projects together. They are spread throughout the city. And so what the contractor does is, he develops his own mobilization schedule and groups his own work in an economy of scale that works for him. So we didn't see any appreciable increase in price because the streets were kind of scattered all over the city.
So I'm happy to really defer to the staff's recommendation on this. I actually am really concerned about using neighborhoods as a second factor. One, because I think it brings an element of discretion and political influence into it when really it should just be worst-first. Two, I'm worried about all the streets, and it seemed like a lot, that 460 sections of street that are not assigned in neighborhoods. So are we going to then put them in neighborhoods where, right, we have to consider where we're investing that? So I'm worried about not assigned streets. And just again, the optics and the questions we get about if it's by a council member's neighborhood or district or street, I just think it actually adds more confusion for the public in a way that we should just, I think, do worst-first to the extent practicable. So if you have other recommendations about strategies, or, you know, I think grouping it together makes sense to save money or whatever it is. But I understand spreading it through the city. We want to make sure that all the neighborhoods get repairs, that we're spreading it equitably through the city, and making sure all areas of Palm Springs fairly get the investment. But I'm just kind of concerned, and that doesn't seem super well-defined.
The only use of the neighborhood is when you're breaking a tie. And so we certainly have found that, and it's not as much as it was four years ago, but that there are neighborhoods where there are a large number of poor streets. And so it, I think it is appropriate to use that as a secondary criteria. But as Marcus said, we do also have to consider those streets that are actually not in neighborhoods. The other thing that is a mitigating factor on this is whether or not it's an arterial or collector street. And we have tried to prioritize arterials and collectors, and most of those don't necessarily fall within specific neighborhoods.
Right, and I think that's my concern, and we want to serve the residents. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're investing this in a way, but, in a way that serves the residents. But we want to make sure we're doing it in an objective way that deals with the most important streets as well. So I'm a little concerned that that method would put more priority on neighborhoods versus arterials and important streets at the discretion of the staff.
Marcus, but it does not, if arterials and collectors still get primacy?
They do. So we're suggesting we attack the, you know, address the arterials first, and then what's left over, we can use on local streets. And I also offer that, you know, each year, we've put together the list of streets. We've really had it vetted publicly through OnePS, and each year, they've really reviewed it and agreed with the list of streets, and we would continue with that approach.
That sounds great. Thank you.
If I could add, just for the public, one of the hardest parts of this is, if your street is 55, and the street down the road from you is 54, that is a very small difference between them. But the 54 is going to get done first. And sometimes, if you're on that 55, and it's the street that's 54 that's getting the work done, it's not hard to come to the conclusion, "Gosh, I think my street was in worse shape than the other street." When it's that close, it's just hard to, the differences are really small.
Any more discussion? One thing this discussion brought up to me, do you think there's any need for Marcus to start thinking about any, the possibility of starting? They identify neighborhoods on these streets. Should we start looking at having them put districts on those streets?
I'll personally say that I think we should make sure that we continue to do this from worst to best and that we not prioritize depending on who, what district someone is in. I would hate to have us get to the point to where we have five city council districts, and 20% of the funds go to each district or something like that.
It sounds like a slippery slope to me.
Yeah, okay.
I agree, and that's why I think the objective measure, and I actually would look at, if it were just me, I'd probably just go by decimal, you know, and go worst first because I think that's an objective measure that people can follow, and we can explain that more easily, I think, than, yeah, districts, it gets to a whole thing. And that's, we want to say, we're serving the city as a whole, and doing that is investing in our worst streets, so...
Okay, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just, just one question to clarify. One of the issues that seems to raise over again is, a street may be in the process of being completed, and all of a sudden, it stops two blocks short or three blocks short of finalizing. And the answer was, and continues to be to some sort, that, "Well, this portion of the road had a much lower score than the other portion, and therefore, we didn't do it." Although, on a practical level, it may just make sense to do those final two or three blocks. So Marcus, I just want to, I think you sort of resolved this, but that there is, besides just the mechanical numbers, there also is your contemplated knowledge, you and your staff on this. So when you need to go ahead and do that little extra, it has a qualitative, normative sort of input from you as opposed to just following the numbers. Can you explain that process?
Yes. And so there's been limited cases where we did that, where there was a short 100 or 200-foot segment that was not going to be repaved, but the other segments next to it. And for whatever reason, the condition of that street segment just didn't have as much distress on it. And so it just made common sense to include that street segment since the other segments were being completed. We'll highlight those to OnePS and to the council to the degree we can, so you're aware of those limited occasions where we do that.
Okay, is that complete on that one? Okay. Next item, item 5E, review and make appointments to city councils, subcommittees, city representatives to projects, liaisons to city commissions and boards, and representatives to external organizations.
Mayor, can I ask a question before we move forward with this? It seems to me Councilman Corz should probably be here for this because we're making decisions about appointments and so forth, and I'm sure he has preferences and thoughts on this. Can we continue this to our next meeting when he can be here as well? Or we could just put him on all of the subcommittees that we don't want to be on. I'm open to either one of those choices, but I think I prefer my first suggestion.
It's probably, it's probably best to do this when all five council members are here, regardless who's not absent.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it would be better. Just, my suspicion is, most of us are going to want to stay with what we already have. And just to make it move more quickly the next time, perhaps we could take a look at everything that we currently have and send something to the city manager indicating any changes that we would like in the assignments that we have, anything new we would like, anything that we would like to drop, so that when we get together in two weeks, we can hopefully move very quickly through.
I'm open to that. I just feel that, again, without Jeff here, we're not really giving him a chance to weigh in on this as well, and we'd basically be starting all over again.
I think he would be here in two weeks, and he would, we can give him notice and then to the city manager what you, what you want.
If I can, quickly, I talked to Mayor Pro Tem Corz today about his preferences a bit, and I just wanted to talk with the council to get a sense of, before we do some of that work, do we want to, and I thank you for the recommendations. I think some of them make a lot of sense, eliminating ones we no longer use, merging them together. make a lot of sense, eliminating ones we no longer use, merging them together. My sense from our conversation in public at the last meeting that we discussed this was that we, it seemed like the will of the council or some of us to stay on the committees that we're currently on and maintain that. So I think I said that at the last meeting. So do we want to discuss now if we have a sense of if we just want to maintain our appointments other than these recommendations? Or do we want to just table it all until the next meeting? I would hate for us to go and engage in the process of emailing all of our preferences if the will of the majority is to stay on the commissions, on the committees that we're on.
I'm fine to go either way. Again, I just think it's a cleaner, more direct process if we're all here commenting on it at one time.
Okay, so we'll move to table it or to continue it to the next council meeting.
We'll table it to the next council meeting when all, assuming all council members are present at the next one. And if all council members aren't present, then we'll table it again until everybody is here.
In the meantime, everybody will stay where they're at.
Okay, good.
You should have a vote on that, continuing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion made, Councilmember Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Thank you. Next item is public comment for...
Mayor Moon, we have an added item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Okay, we had one added item, and that was, would you introduce that, please?
Yeah.
Mr. Mahalia?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the, yesterday, the council subcommittee consisting of councilmembers Middleton and Roberts interviewed candidates for the Administrative Appeals Board. Their recommendations for appointment are presented in the staff reports, which include Stephen Moses, Jocelyn Kane, and Wayne Sinclair. And I defer to the subcommittee.
You want to go first?
Go ahead.
I think these are three very strong candidates. We had a number of strong candidates. The only thing I would add is councilmember Roberts and I also discussed the possibility of identifying two alternates, so that if one of the, one or more of the five members of the Administrative Appeals Board are unavailable, that we would have alternates that we could call on. And if it is the pleasure of the council to approve adding alternates, we have identified two individuals that we would be able to recommend as alternates. And I just need some help from the city clerk, city attorney, as to what the process would be for us to gain approval for there to be alternates.
The red light's on.
He said we'd have to change the ordinance. It's not a big deal.
I would suggest we do, set that and do that as soon as possible.
I concur with Councilwoman, and the sooner the better. This backlog that this board is faced with is enormous, and we've obviously had some real problems in the past due to the quality of our board, and that most of them still work. Most of them are still working full-time jobs, and we're missing a lot of meetings. So I think because of the type of work they're doing, their workload, we should get a bigger board for this, and quickly, almost in an urgency manner, I would suggest.
So I have a question about that. So this is just for the openings, is that right, these three people? And then we have to change the code to allow for alternates?
Correct.
And then did you interview candidates for the alternate positions as well?
We did, and we have recommendations for that.
Okay, and because we interviewed someone for, apparently we have the Board of Appeals and the Appeals Board, and those are different things, and there was some confusion. So I'm wondering if that person could also be in the running for the alternate positions.
Well, I spoke to Peter, and he advised me that he was actually interested in serving on the Board of Appeals as he knows it, and that his understanding was correct, that it's construction-related and building and safety issues. So he actually confirmed that he'd like to be appointed to the Board of Appeals and not the AAB.
Thank you. But so the recommendation is for two alternates? Or why are we picking that number? Because I know we've had, actually, a lot of absences in the past, right? So sometimes we've had three absences, so I'm wondering if we need to appoint more alternates. I know it's difficult for alternates, but I'm just wondering if that's the right number, is two?
Well, we had discussed that, and we just thought if we increased the board to seven and then added two alternates, we'd probably be pretty well-covered to get at least, to get more than a two-to-one vote. We found, you know, we had asked specifically in the case of vacation rental appeals that we didn't feel that a two-to-one vote on those appeals was fair, and we're actually inviting those that lost their appeal based on that number to come back, and they have a second opportunity for an appeal. So Councilwoman and I felt we were probably covered by seven and two. Is that where we left it, Lisa?
I think so. We have, we had two individuals that clearly we were ready to identify as alternates, and I know personally I'm open to a larger number at some point.
Just for clarification, my understanding is the board's to remain at five, and we're adding two alternates so that for a total of seven.
Well, and we're open to increasing the size of the board itself to seven and then adding, and adding as well as the two alternates. Again, just because of the caseload that this board's seeing now. So, I mean, I guess that can be up for discussion, but it was something that Councilwoman Middleton and I discussed at great length.
If you go to seven, presumptively, there wouldn't be rulings that were final unless four members voted, but I would want to get that direction before we actually took to drafting. So with the direction to staff that you're giving, please at least appoint a liaison who can work with me and give me that substantive direction as to what you want to see in the ordinance.
So explain what you mean, because it changes the, what's a quorum?
Right. That's exactly why, and what's a majority of the body present? And I'm presuming if we're going to follow step with the other boards that we have and the prior conversations that the council has had, you're going to want at least four members of a seven-member board to be voting in favor of any particular final outcome for the appeal. That's synthesizing a lot of discussions you've had before.
Well, it would work simply the same way the planning commission does, and yes, you'd need a majority vote. But if nothing else, you get a quorum, you're guaranteed a quorum, and that's what we need.
No, a quorum would increase from three to four, right?
Yeah.
Okay, correct.
Which is just how we handle every other seven-member board.
That's fine.
So, you know, in that case, you know, we're comfortable with suggesting either a seven-member board, full-time board, or a five-member board with two alternates. And we think we are covered well under both those scenarios. So we're just throwing that out to our colleagues for your thoughts.
I think either one is potentially workable, so if either of you have strong feelings.
And we have, and just for the record, we have recommendations for either one of those scenarios right now.
Actually, based on history, on the Measure J Commission when it was first set up seven years ago, eight years ago, we set it up, the council set it up with a couple of alternates, and that got very confusing. So when would the alternates be used? Is that if one of the primaries can't make it, but then they have to notify them in advance? So what would they do, notify the city clerk, and the city clerk would call an alternate?
They could even, I mean, to me, it's more like jury service where you have an alternate because these people are sitting in a quasi-judicial role, they're deciding. So they would, it's a good point. They would have to prepare for the meeting, and they'd have to do the readings, and they might have to attend in case someone is sick that day. I think that they would fully participate as alternates, or we could, they could rotate. We could talk about a cycle where you rotate who's the alternate for those meetings because probably one person doesn't want to be a permanent alternate without a vote. But I think, and we talked about, and we asked staff to bring back recommendations for changing the system, and so we had worked a little bit about that. So it sounds like, right now, I think, I definitely support, thank you for urgency, moving forward quickly on appointing these people. And then I think we need to have the larger conversation about the board structure and how many people would be there. It's an important conversation because for due process, we talk about how many do you need to win your appeal, or how many should be on that board. Those are really important conversations that I think we need to look at more in-depth before we change that. So do we have a timeline? So we're doing this now so that our appeals can go forward? And then what are we doing about the direction to change the system in some way or assess that?
Let me, you raised a point. I mean, we believe that a hearing officer is a better route to go, a better model. If that's what council wants us to go, we could have that to you over the next 30 days, 30 to 60 days. And then, and then we, I recommend we go forward with what we have here, we start getting the appeals heard of what we have on the books, and then at some point down the road, you'll give us direction on if you want to go to an appeals officer. Or in the alternative, then, if you don't want to do that, you may want to, say, increase the board to X, to the seven. So we may not want to do an ordinance change if you're going to change the structure, or at least have that discussion. So I think we go forward here, but again, I'm open to your direction.
That makes sense, Dr. Reddy. We just can't wait any longer. We are at an urgent point, hence hearing this tonight. So I would suggest we go with the five and the two alternates for now, just so that we can get these people working.
I don't think we can appoint the two ordinance at this point without changing the, I mean, the two alternates.
No, 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 we can't add alternates at this point?
No, it's a legislative change to add the alternates and...
We can do it.
At the next meeting.
We can do it at the next meeting as an urgency.
Okay, let's do that. Let's at least add the alternates to the five.
I agree.
But do you want the alternates to be required to be at the meeting?
I think Councilwoman Holstich had a good idea. Why don't we have two alternates that alternate meeting to meeting, so we always have one person in the room?
Oh, well...
One extra?
All right, just, let me keep it from confused, so they would, one would always be, they wouldn't alternate, some are alternates and some are members.
No, 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 no. The two alternates would be alternates, we just wouldn't need to require them both to be at every single meeting. But I suggest that we always have one alternate at the meeting in case they need to act.
Well, and the reason that might not be a problem is because most times when we go to set up the meeting, we are informed whether someone's not available. It's usually not that they're sick, so we know in advance, so then we could call the alternate. So I don't think that'd be a problem for us to do that model.
I think that should be left to staff to implement.
That's the way it's worked up to now, and that's fine with us.
And so we will bring our alternate selections to the next meeting, and that'll give Councilwoman Middleton and I an opportunity to talk again because there was a little bit of a shuffle on our selections because of people who actually served on other boards, and there were some questions. So that'll give us an opportunity to have a talk and bring our recommendations.
I'll just need direction from one of you by Tuesday next week.
No problem.
And then to answer the city manager's question, so I do think we should bring forward at least a discussion item about if we want to proceed with a hearing officer, which was, you know, the subcommittee's recommendation initially, or if we want to continue using an appeals board with alternates. So I think maybe those two options, whatever staff recommends, and then we can decide as a council.
Okay, but right now, the item on the floor is to approve the three nominations for the appeals board.
Did we name them?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I can't find a copy of it.
Stephen Moses for a term ending June 30, 2019, Jocelyn Kane for a term ending June 30, 2021, and Wayne Sinclair for a term ending June 30, 2021.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Middleton? Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Next item is public comment and non-agenda items. This time, it's been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Currently, we have three people who have requested to speak. First, Alad Worthy, followed by Edward Holzauer, and then Yasmin Espinoza.
...ago, I guess, I had prevailed at this ex parte hearing on my condo, and then when we went back, I did not prevail, and the city is culpable. I do not know why, I am the only one in town, as far as I can tell, whose caregiver and these grifters have been prosecuted but me, okay? But we know it was Sergeant Matt Veard's report clouding the system, which we have never discussed. Ms. Middleton, the other problem with you was the other night at Mazzell Center, you said, "You have these witnesses that have not come forward." It's not my job. It's the job of the police, they have failed to do it, and it is your job, okay? It's not my job to make phone calls to people, even though I have done it and I've sought them out. They're not going to give me statements, and it's not my job. It's your job, okay? This has got to stop. And I turned in an amended complaint today, and I expect you to answer it, because this is going nowhere, except you're risking your license, the two attorneys sitting up there, Mr. Corr is being absent tonight, and the predicament that you're putting Ed Kotkin in, okay? It is outrageous that I have been fleeced, along with my family, left with nothing, in this heaven for caregivers from hell, okay? Your comments at Mazzell are completely inappropriate and not even accurate, okay? And it's a violation of your oath to not be thinking it through and talking to me that way and/or making statements that are just out of left field. It's not true. You've never followed up on it, okay? I expect you to answer this demand, and there are two exhibits, the one I've submitted repeatedly about the Pond family.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
Goes on and on. You all look terrible. We have to go on and move on, okay? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edward Holzauer, followed by Yasmin Espinoza.
Good evening. My name is Edward Holzauer, and I live in Palm Desert. I have spoken before about the protections of sanctuary city status in the past, and I'm here again this evening to speak to you on this same issue. As you know, children were removed from their families and detained in detention centers. It has been reported that two children died while in custody here in the United States. It is also a known fact that these are the only two that have been reported. With further investigation, we'll show that more have been killed by harsh treatment, abuse, and a plain lack of respect for humanity. I have personally been to San Diego to see this disgraceful treatment of human beings. The administration is just dumping them into cities with no food, no money, and no resources. These families have a short window to get to their sponsors and to appear for their court dates. If it wasn't for the kindness of American citizens who have realized that this is inhumane, they would have nothing available to them. Sanctuary city is not just political words. It's saying to America that you respect humans. My husband, just days before going into the hospital in what would be the last days of his life, saw the story of a Guatemalan girl who died in custody, and he said to me, "Not one more of my sisters will die." I promised him that I will do everything I can to do to help this, as well as the other issues. A resolution declaring Palm Springs sanctuary city. You see, this is not a right or left issue. This is an issue of, we will be on the right side of humanity, a human race that values all life with dignity and respect. A diversity ordinance does not go far enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holzauer. Next speaker is Yasmin Espinoza.
Good evening, City Council. The reason I come to you this evening is I want to speak about sanctuary city and the ordinance. We are living in a different hostile time. We are experiencing it. I am one of the volunteers that goes down to the San Diego border, the Tijuana border, and now we're going into the Mexicali area. The, it is, asylum seekers have now come into Coachella Valley. They're here now. We've been doing this for over a month, and the second wave has just hit this week. They are here, and with the sanctuary city ordinance being changed, not only will you be protecting the asylum seekers, the immigrants, but because of the media and hostile groups, they also are now focusing on the volunteers, that when we sign up for these sites, we go onto a certain site, we're emailed our time, our 12-hour shift, so we can go in and take donations of clothing and food and money, and we find out that this gets breached. We're not allowed our cell phones or photographs be taken within the shelters for their safety and for our safety. We really stress that the city, the sanctuary city ordinance gets revisited. We're seeing complications, and this would help also with volunteers, because we have lost volunteers because now it's becoming a hostile situation. This is now in our doorsteps. I am also signed up to, with the homeless counting that's going to be happening next Tuesday. With these two looming, I can see the count climbing. This is a whole different ballgame. I'm even shocked every time I go what happens when we either cross into Tijuana or on the San Diego side, and now here on our border, and now here in the Coachella Valley. So thank you for your time. I hope you reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Espinosa. City clerk, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak?
No other speakers?
Seeing none, we will close the second portion of, I would comment. Next item, city council and city manager request and upcoming agenda development. Anyone have any items for this? Councilmember Holstich?
I have a request, thank you. I was really moved by the public speakers. California is now a sanctuary state. We've done everything we can. We've signed on, at least at the city, we've signed on to briefs, fighting the administration's litigation against California. But at their request and in honor of my friend Carlos Pineda, I would like to move that the city council consider a resolution about our sanctuary status. I think that that language mattered then, and I think it still matters now to tell our community that they're safe. So I would like to have the council consider that resolution at a future meeting.
Okay, anybody else? Dr. Reddy, anything?
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask that either Councilmember Holstich or some other member of the council work with staff to direct, staff has to contend here, because there's a wide range of things that could conceivably be a part of such a resolution?
I would be happy to volunteer to write it as well with you or give direction, so I'd be happy to do that.
That'll be great. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session, but we are adjourning in memory of Mayor Greg Pettis, Carol Channing, and Kay Ballard, three friends of the Coachella Valley and our city who unfortunately we've lost since the last meeting. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session until February 6, 2019, at 6 o'clock in the city council, city council chamber at City Hall. Thank you.